We, the board approved the Office of Administrative Hearings Agreement regarding case number 201, if anybody's taking notes on these numbers here, 201-707-0870. Hope that's your winning lottery number. So, that's that for closed session, and if we could establish quorum.
Good evening. Board member Crystal Sawyer White?
Present.
Board member Gary Hack?
Here.
Board member Diane Gibson Gray?
Here.
Board vice president Deborah Vinson?
Present.
Board president Walter Rulick?
Present.
If you could follow me in flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Approval of board minutes, item C. We have a motion by trustee Vinson.
Second.
Second by trustee Hack. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Move to item number four, superintendent reports.
Yes, good evening. So, we've now finished doing our warm body count, and I'm happy to report that we are up 344 students over projected staffing. Now, the difficult part of that is that you have to add staff immediately, and so we're filling those classrooms as we speak, but that's actually good news for the district as far as revenue goes. And I also just want to say, just to embarrass him, you may have read somewhere that Dr. Clark will be leaving us. He's recently been appointed the superintendent of Valeo Unified School District, and I just want to thank him. It's been, we were just reminiscing today about the year that he's been here and kind of, kind of, the journey, and it's been such a pleasure working with you, and I know you're going to do great things. I can't wait to read about them, and hopefully we'll stay in touch, but just thank you so much for your service, and congratulations. And that concludes my report for this evening.
Okay, thank you. Public comments. Crystal Burnett, is your comment something, not on the agenda, it appears? Not on the agenda? Right. Okay.
Butterflies the size of dinosaurs. Okay. I'm up discussing a situation regarding transfer of two of my children. When I originally transferred my first son, I was told by Bob Sanchez there wouldn't be a problem when my other children started school and being able to have my children together at the same school. After three years of trying to get my second son transferred, and now my third son transferred as well, I am being met with a stone wall. I now have a fourth grader at OPS, a first grader, and a kindergarten at Kimball. My first grader and my fourth grader get out at the same exact times, 2:25 on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday, and 1:10 on Wednesdays. How am I supposed to be at two different schools in two different cities at the same time? How do I pick between a nine-year-old and a seven-year-old who gets picked up first and who sits outside their school for 20 to 30 minutes until I can get there from the other school? Stated in the Unified School District handbook, it reads that police and CPS will be brought in for students repeatedly picked up late. For either one of my older children, waiting outside for 20 to 30 minutes unsupervised is a major safety concern. The reason I am 20 to 30 minutes late every day is because of school traffic, parents double, triple parking, driving or parking into oncoming traffic lanes, and et cetera. I have confirmed with OPS that they do in fact have a spot available in both first and kinder, so please don't lie and tell me that they are full. My kinder is special needs in the sense of speech therapy. I have also confirmed that Kimball does not have a speech therapist and confirm that OPS does. Lastly, I have a concern regarding Kimball staff touching and opening students' food, both from home and from school with no gloves. I recently witnessed the substitute janitor empty the garbage with one gloved hand, throw his glove away, put in a new bag in the can, and move on to helping other students open their food and drinks without washing or putting on new gloves. Would that be considered a health and safety violation?
Ms. Burnett, have you had any recent conversations with Mr. Sanchez, or?
I have, and every time I go there, I get told, "Come here." I came last week, but I was a few minutes late, and I missed this part of it, and I was advised to go back to the Student Support Services. They still tell me there's nothing I can do. I have to come here. For some reason, you guys have closed down Orchard Park to all transfers, which I understand to a point, because it is a great school, and people are dying to get their kids there. But now you're creating a situation where I have to choose one child over another. I wish that was something you guys would consider.
If you want to leave your information, just in case we can get back to you.
Okay. I'll start.
And then can you also send us follow-up emails to let us know how it's going?
Yes, and if you guys would like, I can type this up and email it to each of you so you have your own copies as well.
Sure.
Mr. Mims is our next speaker.
To the president, to the board, to members of the community, Willie Mims, resident of East County NAACP, and also a member of Pittsburgh Black Political Association. First of all, I want to, I came to wish Dr. Clark good luck in his departure from the Antioch Unified School District. I think that his presence here has been a valuable asset to this community, and he will be surely missed. I have had an opportunity to work with him in the Liberty Unified School District, and we've always had a positive working relationship. I think that when he came here, he brought a level of accountability to the administration staff that had been missing. How do I know? Because I've been dealing with him almost for the lowest. But anyway, with that said, Dr. Clark, good luck, and I'll probably visit you. If you have problems, give me a call. You know, I'll come. The other-
Can we reset the clock, because he, I don't think that should be part of the three minutes. You should start over, because you're congratulating him. Can we do that, Mr. President?
That's, that's all right.
You don't have enough time.
I'll get it in. I mean, I'll get it in somewhere else. There's a whole lot I want to agenda here now.
Okay. I'll give you three minutes.
Okay, okay. So, anyway, I also come to protest the August 23 board meeting, because there was an action that took place, there was a vote that took place on a non-agendized item. Now, under the Brown Act, section 549, 54, Part II, it says, "No action or discussion shall be undertaken on any item not appearing on the posted agenda." Now, the issue and the problem here is the findings and discussion on Deborah Vincent was on the posted agenda, but not any actions or options to take action against Deborah Vincent. The vote on the findings never took place, and so you're sitting here with three items under her name on this agenda, which is illegal. So, I'm challenging the legality of even her being on this agenda, because you took an action on a non-agendized item. Also, President Rulick, when you introduced those five options at the end of the board meeting, the people did not have access to those items. We never knew that they existed. Your four board members never knew that they existed. You operate as a board, not as a dictator. You had those options, you came up with them yourself, and you don't have that authority. And I mean, you can consult legal, but legal can't cite any board policy or case law accounting protocol that says you have the authority to supersede the other board members. But anyway, so I'm here to protest her name even being on this agenda. Thank you.
Okay, we'll duly note that, and we, by the way, sent you an email today answering some questions. That was one of them? Yes.
You have to call me. I mean, I get two minutes a day, man.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. I'll check.
Okay, we now turn to Velma Wilson.
Good evening, board of trustees. This has been a long week. I'm excited. This time next week, I'll be asleep, so don't nobody bother me. But I just wanted to just say, yes, we are less than a week away from celebrating the 10th anniversary of the Mary Island Fellow Awards Dinner. Those that were able to get tickets, good job. Those that weren't, sorry. But we're going to celebrate, and I want everyone to reflect on why this event is so crucial in our district and why the foundation has really worked tirelessly over the past 10 years to really do a bang-up job to celebrate our teachers and award them for their efforts. So, I hope that those that are looking, everybody's looking forward to it. Our Councilor of the Year is super excited. I have had numerous of conversations with her. She is very, very excited to be in attendance and to share some very good things that she is doing in her school and in their district as well. It's been a lot, but I just want to thank everyone for their support and just truly, really, really, really come expecting to be blessed by what you're going to experience on next Tuesday. It's going to be a very nice event for this district, for this community, for this city, and you will never forget it. So, on that note, also just want to also say, I want to thank Stephanie and Adam. Adam, I know I just kind of clowned you at the principals' meeting and just kind of went over the top, but, you know, I really do, really do appreciate you and really giving back to this community and really pouring in at a time when there were so many people that were attacking the district on things that really they couldn't have no basis on. And I really want to thank you for always keeping that game face and letting them know, yes, you could be crazy, Joe, if you needed to be, but you also came with a spirit of excellence and poise and with grace, and you operated in the position in which you were there for. And I really want to say thank you, because I know you think I just, we have this love-hate relationship, but I really want to thank you for everything you have done for this district, and you'll be missed, even though I know they're at me about wanting to come and give some, and sign some of the things that we have been able to institute here in this district over this past, over the last school year. So, thank you again.
We now turn to items from staff, district employees. Not on the agenda as of now, I don't see any cards, so. And Mr. Clark, since your name keeps coming up, want to thank you. It's been an extreme pleasure.
Thank you. If I may, I would just like to thank the board for their commitment to the students and to the staff of the Antioch Unified School District. I know that as elected officials, you guys are, you know, you guys serve at the will of the public, and so I recognize that, and I appreciate the opportunity that I've had to serve and work within this great community. So, with that, this is an experience that I will take a great deal away from, but hopefully that I've left a small mark here. So, again, thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Move to item number six, district reports. Measure B project update.
Yes, as you recall, at a recent board meeting, the board asked for an update on the Measure B progress, and we'll have director of facilities of, wait, I got it wrong, didn't I? Director of?
Facilities.
It is facilities. He will be giving a report this evening. Thank you, sorry.
It's fine to drop my name. Yes.
Good evening, board of trustees, superintendent LO, and cabinet. I'm Sajiv Madhavan, director of facilities. Today, I'm presenting the Measure B Bond Program project updates. I have structured the presentation in such a way as to give a brief introduction to Measure B, what Measure B Bond Program is. We also have the list of projects under Measure B, the projects which have already been completed, projects which got completed this summer, current projects we are working on, future projects in the pipeline, projects which are currently out in the street for bid, and culminating with the major construction challenges. I also have a surprise video I wanted to share with you before I talk about the major construction challenges. On November 6th of, slide before, come on. November 6th of 2012, voters in Antioch Unified School District supported the 56.5 million Measure B Bond Program, which it was basically to modernize, renovate, construct, equip, furnish, and improve Antioch High School, its classrooms, science and technology labs, improving the safety and security systems, build, construct a new library, new cafeteria, upgrading the athletic facilities, and replace the aging and inefficient building systems as well as technology. The, next slide. The project was divided into two phases based on the immediate needs and importance. We have completed all the Phase One projects except 1C3, because 1C3 houses the temporary kitchen under the building 500, and the wing 400 has the ROP program, which has a computer lab which needs to be moved. So, we hasn't got to 1C3, which will be done next summer. So, we moved on, we finished all the Phase One and moved on to Phase Two now. So, the first project we completed in June of 2015 under Measure B was the stadium, track and field, and the weight room. The significant features of this project was a new synthetic track, artificial turf field, refurbished existing bleachers, and provided new press box, new entry structure, ticket booths, new storage, new toilets, and new concession building, and the entire stadium lighting was replaced. Next was the completion of the new administration and the library building, completed in May of 2016. What you see in the inset is the, how it was before the entry to the school and how it looks now. It's a new two-storied administration wing, and it consists of the entire administration in the first floor with the library, computer lab, and the career center on the second floor. This project also had the revised staff and the visitor parking lot. Next is the modernization of all the, of three classroom wings, 6, 7, and 9, which completely revitalized the fit and finishes inside the room, even though you don't see as much, but in the video, I can, I may be able to share more. We replaced the HVAC and also did a lot of ADA upgrades. We revised the interior layout. The buildings never had any access to the quad space you see in between, so it created, we created new student activity spaces and the access to the newly landscaped outdoor spaces. The greenhouse and the modernization of the environmental cord was also done along with this modernization. Moving on. In 2017, the 1100 wing modernization and the new cafeteria project was bid together. 1100 wing was completed end of summer 2017 and is being currently used as the media technology wing. The existing library, you see, that was the old library, which is now housed in the second floor of the administration, is shown with the dotted line. The old library has been converted into two computer labs, classrooms, media quad, media room, and group rooms. Also, that make big media center or quad space in the center for the kids to collaborate and communicate. The existing classrooms around that were also modernized with new fit and finishes all around, and a new chiller was added to provide HVAC for the entire building. The scope of work also included the renovation of the exterior quad space of adjacent to building 1100. So, that's the rendering of 1100 as done by the architect, and I'll show you the picture of how it ended up. It really close to what the rendering showed. We don't have the full furniture yet. It's being shipped, and I think it will be shipped tomorrow. We will have all the furniture installed in the building, and that's how it used to look before. Next slide. So, this is the plan for the new cafeteria. The new cafe is currently under construction and planned to get completed during April of 2018. It will have indoor seating, which is shown in that light green for 560 students, and in dark green, covered exterior dining for 225 students. It will have state-of-the-art commercial kitchen, which is shown in yellow with support spaces shown in brown. The building will also have staff dining space shown in orange and storage rooms, toilets for student and staff, covered walkways, and exterior landscaping. And that's the rendering of how the cafeteria is going to get, is going to look once it gets completed. The next project is a new swimming pool, which is south in the street currently, and the bids are due on the 19th. This project was split into two phases because of the delay we had at DSA. Phase One is a demolition on the top, which we have already completed, almost getting completed, and Phase Two is the construction of the new swimming pool. The new swimming pool will be a 35-meter competition swimming pool with new infrastructure, pool deck, fencing and gates, pump house, pool chemical storage, team rooms, toilet rooms, solar canopy, and other utilities.
Where is this at?
This is going to be replaced, the existing pool demo, the pool has been demolished.
So, that's the old?
So, that's the old one, and this pool is going to go right.
Wasn't there two pools?
It was two pools, so we are combining that into one 35-meter competition-style swimming pool.
Where's the seating area?
The seating area is the orange, that orange, you see, there is going to be that just outside of that. Over here will be the solar canopy.
You need a laser.
Oh, yeah, I need a laser, sorry.
How does that compare to Deer Valley's pool?
In terms of-
Size.
I think this one would be the competition style. This is more up-to-date to their-
Hold for your laser.
Thank you.
Joe.
Yep.
Up-to-date to the latest, you know, athletic standards, you know, this pool would be much up-to-date compared to what we have at Deer Valley. So, just to give you a snapshot of the project status of where we are, so I have already explained of all the projects and the modernization of the classroom wings of 300, 400, and 500 will happen next summer. Some of the, some of the projects on the bottom, the renovation of the baseball and the softball fields, and the gymnasium and the locker room, we have to see where we are in terms of funding. Once we complete the 300, 400, and 500, then we will go ahead and see what we can afford on those projects. So, I think we could now move on to the video.
Can you say that again about the funding? I just want to make sure I heard you correctly.
I just said that once we complete all the projects, which is shown in the list, on the modernization of the gymnasium and the locker room, the scope of the project can only be finalized once we have identified how much funding is left under Measure B, so that we don't go over what's left in the Measure B Bond Program.
And do you know if in the original architectural design, this was included?
It was not, it was always left as, if we have funds available, we can go ahead and address it.
Okay, thank you.
That's how we did it.
All right.
Okay, so I just wanted to bring, last not but the least, the construction challenges, because there have been multiple questions about the change orders and the changes we are having. So, many of the buildings under Measure B are existing buildings, and therefore there has been a lot of unforeseen construction issues, not discovered during design phase, but during construction phase. There is a lot of existing abandoned utility lines throughout, because when previous work has happened, they have left behind the pipes, so we have constantly on the discovery path to figure out which is active and which is not active. Deterioration of the existing infrastructure, when we open up, the pipes, the gas pipes, all have been corroded. So, that's, could be expected, but to a, it's, to a great extent, that, than what we expect, and some of the previous repairs are not code compliant, so we have to take out the whole thing and redo again. Old clay sewer pipes have tree roots grown into them, and the sewer system are collapsing at multiple locations. Even though we change at the new locations, the water sewer will not flow because of the other locations it's flowing into is clogged. Existing irrigation and domestic water are combined at locations which are non-compliant, which we have to change. Lack of as-built or historical documents or existing conditions, which we can give to the engineers or the architects to document in the drawings. Existing, that is a challenge only on the 1100 building, the existing main distribution fiber and the campus main fiber is housed in building 1100. So, when we had to do the building 1100, we could not switch off the power, neither could do the generator work or anything until the summer. So, that means we lagged on a lot of work, and we had to expedite to catch up with the So, with that-
I'm so sorry.
Measure B questions?
So, when is the grand opening?
Of completion of everything, or the completion of the cafe will be, is expected to be in April of 2018. We will be, at the same time, we will also be constructing the 300 and 400, 500 wing. That's the last group of classroom modernization. At the end of summer of 2018, we are expecting to complete Measure B, and we will at that time assess what the condition of our financial is to figure out if we could accommodate more work at the high school.
Okay, one other question. The classroom sizes, are they bigger? I mean, I-
We haven't changed the size of the classrooms. We have mainly, either we have combined two classrooms into one to convert that into a computer lab. We have kept the same size of the classrooms as they are. The new buildings we are doing are the cafe, the administration, the swimming pool. We are not doing a new classroom wing.
Okay.
If that's your question.
Yes, thank you.
Well, it looks like a lot of good news.
Yes.
Nothing is ever perfect, though. Any hiccups on the projects?
Well, those were the hiccups, the major hiccups, I explained, but there are always few here and there, but we overcome all that, and that's why I'm here.
So, can I ask you about the area where they were going to have food and all of that? Did that ever get worked out without being up to code with the health department? That's the kitchen area where they sell the foods and everything outside. I know there were some issues with the-
With Antioch High School?
Mm-hmm.
Well, we are now constructing the new kitchen.
Okay.
On a temporary basis, we are doing foot caves, and I don't, I don't collect that being a health issue ever being brought up at Antioch High School.
Okay, all right. So, I was thinking in terms of, there were some code issues that were missing. I know Chris Larnett worked on bringing, making sure that things were in place so the kitchen could be used, so it sounds like we may have worked through all of that.
We are, yes.
And then, when will it be complete for use in terms of public use for, you know, for the youth sports groups that come in? Because I know there were some issues, and they were not able to use the kitchens.
Yes, I believe what you're speaking about are the concession stands?
Yes.
And yes, those currently need to be brought up to code. They were not part of the original Measure B list, but if we do have money at the end, that would possibly be one of the things we would look at.
Okay, so that would be great. So, the outside concessions with the kitchen area, the sink and the plugs for them to heat food and all that stuff, that will be, if money is left, be brought up to code?
Possibly, yes.
Okay, but as for use right now, we're not, it's not ready for use or it's not really open for use because of those conditions, correct?
Yeah, it's on a case-by-case basis. There's also food handling certificates that need to be in place, so if a group has met certain requirements, we are letting them currently use them.
Okay, so it is open for use?
Yes.
And then, is there any concern, because we have had a lot of change orders, is there any concern that we're going to run out of money?
We don't have any concern of running out of money.
Great.
No. We will be able to complete all the major projects we had in our mind, but what is left behind to do anything extra is something we have to look into.
Okay, we'll keep our fingers crossed. Thank you.
So, Measure B was passed, what, in 2013?
2012.
12?
Yeah.
So, that means the kids who are in third grade at that time are going to be the first ones to really see the finished product.
Yes.
I mean, it's just, third grade didn't have a clue.
Yeah.
We have food.
Takes time.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Mims, I want to speak on item number six, I believe?
Yes.
First of all, you know, I want to commend the report that was given, but one of the concerns I have is that, you know, when you undergo- the concerns I have is that, you know, when you undergo a project such of this nature, there should have been an environment impact report. And so, you know, I mean, it looks like the environment impact report missed a whole lot. And so when you miss a whole lot, it, it, it brings in change orders. So how much money in change orders have this project incurred? I mean, beyond the original funding for it, because I'm, I heard a whole lot of deterioration here, fouls up underground there. I mean, so, you know, your, your environment impact report should have picked up something, but that was a long list that I heard. So can I get some kind of answer on that particular question?
We can get that information to you.
Okay.
Definitely, yes. And so what you want is the amount we've now been charged in change orders?
Yes, and also, what, why did the environment impact report miss all of that?
Okay, great.
They didn't move out of money.
All right, well, definitely, thank you.
Item B, district demographic reports.
Someone is asking to come back up now on the slide.
On item six? Is that six?
Six.
Marissa Wilson on Measure B.
One, I just want to say, is this like closer up? Because this feels like really close to you guys.
Yeah.
Okay, but anyway, um, I just had a question about the bathroom situation at Antioch High School. I wanted to know if we were going to do any updates on the 500, the bathroom near the 500 hall, like with the plumbing and everything? And then also, are we going to add mirrors to the 1100 hall bathrooms? Great, okay, that's it. Important stuff.
It's important to put on lipstick.
All right.
Okay, you have another one for this now.
Okay, I believe we have one last one, it looks like, for item number six, it's a popular item. Julia.
Emago Quay?
Emago...
Quay.
Quay, yes.
Good evening, members of the board and members of the community. Due to global warming, the outdoor benches in outdoor areas where the students spend their time during lunch recess need umbrellas or shading roofs because it's increasingly getting hotter and hotter, so they need that shade. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that up. We now move to item number 6B, district demographic report.
Yes.
Projected enrollments.
As you are aware, the district has been in a state of declining enrollment for a few years now. We wanted to do a, a study from a professional demographer who's going to present kind of where we are today, why we find ourselves where we are and what to expect in the coming years so that we can better plan for facilities, budgeting, staffing, all sorts of things. So, did you want to introduce?
Yes, I would like to introduce Mr. Thomas Williams from Enrollment Projections Incorporated.
Consultants, close enough. Consultants. I see some familiar faces from a decade ago. Same building, 10 years later, but a lot of other changes. I want to comment that, you'll see a lot of slides in this, but I want to comment that what I found here in terms of housing that gets built all at once or relatively all at once and all the young families move in at once and they all have kids at the same time and this big bubble moves through, I've seen over and over and over again. It's not by any means unique to Antioch. In Antioch, in Evergreen right now in southeast San Jose, they had a whole bunch of housing built in the last decade, they're going to lose 2,000 kids in the next five years. So it's a very common thing to have so much new detached housing be built all at once, have a big bubble move through and suddenly have the bottom fall out in kindergarten for a half dozen or a dozen years and then bottom out and slowly come back. And that's basically what's happened in this district in the last decade and that's why we're now bottoming out and starting to come back from that. On that note, next slide, please. This summarizes the summary page in the report, even shorter than that summary page. I just want to point out what I just said. Bullet one talks about how the single family built, detached dwellings built from 10 to 25 years ago, having the hot, common trend of declining kindergarten numbers because so many families have matured past childbearing age, are the original families. And we have much lower numbers during the last decade coming out of those homes than we did in the previous decade. Since most of those were concentrated in the southeast Antioch area, that's where that decline most significantly occurred. However, and a lot of those neighborhoods were now near the low of where I expect the bottom to be or approaching the low where I expect the bottom to be, so the, the scope of decline that we had in the last decade should not continue. In addition, the birth data for the two main zip codes of this district, not count the small parts in Oakley or Pittsburgh, also show some numbers turning around. So there are reasons to expect the decline of the last decade is basically ending. May not be coming back much, but not going down much more, at least not to the degree of the last decade. And that's why I have bullet three, says the culmination of all those findings, is that the projected enrollment only falls by another 600 in the next five years and a significant chunk of that is actually due to the Rocketship Charter School. If not for the Rocketship Charter School, I would be projecting almost a flat enrollment in net over the next five years. Does that make sense to everybody? Okay, next slide, please. This is the summary slide, there's actually an appendix A slide that shows the amounts by grade, which are too much to put in a PowerPoint show, but I want to comment that you have relatively large classes now in fourth, fifth, eighth, 10th and 11th. And it's as those classes graduate upward in the short term, it affect why in the yellow you'll see different amounts by grade level. For example, for next year, that big class now in eighth will graduate into ninth, but it's a relatively normal-sized class in 12th graduating out. So that's why for next year I have relatively no change projected, actually now this year at the high school level. However, the middle schools gain that fifth and lose that eighth, two large classes causing a small decline. The elementaries lose that large fifth, causing a more significant decline. The following year, the main impact is the Rocketship School. It's also affected by that current large fourth grade class graduating out, but also Rocketship School opening. And that's focused primarily on the Kimball, Marsh, Belshaw and, blanking out on the top of my head, Fremont Attendants area, thank you. But you'll notice that as that fourth grade class graduates into the middle schools, we bounce right back up on the middle school level and then as that current 11th grade class graduates out for the following year, the high school goes down. So it's really just a nuance of where the large classes are, where the small classes are, why you have those differences other than the opening of the Rocketship Charter School. But if you look at the last year in yellow, you'll see I've got the elementary total about down by 330. Thereafter, I've got the elementary total coming back up. That's based on several major factors, one of which is the birth data supports that, another of which is all the new housing likely to be built by then in this district. So in net, we're down 218, five years out, and I'm projecting over 300 to go to the Rocketship Charter School of kids that otherwise would have been enrolled in this district. There will be more kids in that Rocketship Charter School who may move in from outside the district because of that school. But in terms of kids that would have otherwise have been enrolled in, in your schools, it's probably like 300, 350. So you'll see that in net, I actually would have a projected gain at the elementary level if it was not for the Rocketship Charter School. Makes sense to everybody? Okay. This is what happened from 1993 to 2016 and then what's projected for the next five years. I have worked on upwards of 70 school districts, I've lost track, but it's probably upwards of 80 or 90 at this point. I've been doing this since 1985. I've never seen as dra, dramatic a swing as happened in this district. You went from just soaring to turn around to declining on a dime in 2003. And everything I just said about how neighborhoods all built at once have declines occur is still true, but nobody changes that fast. That's really a statistical outlier. And when I was working for you folks a dec, decade ago and that decline first started, I said, "I'm worried about this, but I just don't know where it's going to go," and it went down even worse than I thought. However, again, all the data indicators are we should be near the bottom for a lot of the southeast Antioch decline, for the birth count decline, and now we got all this new housing coming on, so there's a real strong reason to expect that to be petering out. Walter, looks like you have a question.
So what's, what, what's the theory behind how exacerbated it was?
Statistics are all about a 95% probability or a 90% probability and that means every now and then something does something that just is, just out there.
It's completely out there.
And this is just completely out there.
But in your view, this is extreme in comparison to other districts? Or is it relative?
Well, it's extreme and it turned on one year. I mean, that's just, just unreal. But there was a period, and I forget the exact year now, maybe 2002 or was it before that, where the original Melrose 89-1, they had to have their permits pulled by a certain date or they lost their rights, I don't know if you remember this way back when. And so they pulled, all the owners pulled just a pile of permits and built a pile of homes in, in 99, 2000, 2001, 2002, 2003. Well, by the time we got to about 2009, all those families that moved there stopped having kids. So it's not unusual to, to have, when thousands and thousands of homes get built all at once, it's not unusual to have a whole bunch of young kids right off the bat and then 10 years later, they're more in the high school grades and that's what the next slide shows, or is it a couple of slides later? It's a couple of slides later. Now, I do all my analyses based on where your kids live, including the, where they live in more affordable apartments or nicer apartments or smaller detached homes or larger detached homes. Not because I care if they're rich or poor, because I get a better sense of where the enrollment is changing and from that I can evaluate how likely it is to continue by degree. So, when I talk about resident students, I'm talking about your kids, not private school kids, your kids, based on where they live. When I talk about enrollment, I'm talking about the schools they attend. And in this district, some of those numbers are hugely different. For example, in the second row, Kimball has 590 K5 kids living in that attendance area attending Antioch Unified Schools. A net of 100 go out to other schools. In Marsh's case, a net of 240 go out to other schools. So even though you see a resident number of 816 for Marsh, there's 576 in attendance because in net, over a quarter of the kids go to other schools by transfer.
Other schools of the district or other schools?
In the district. These are your kids, these have nothing to do with private kids or kids going to other districts. These are Antioch Unified School District kids based on where they live, based on the, compared to the schools they attend.
Excuse me.
So...
So when you say going out, are you counting the inter-district transfers through Consetica County of Education?
I'm dealing, these are just your kids and if you consider them your kids...
They are our kids originally.
If they're, if they're, but still enrolled in your schools, not in a different program, not in a county SDC program or anything.
No.
But enrolled in your schools.
Right, I'm talking about the parents who request to be transferred out.
Right.
Have you tracked that data?
No, that's a separate issue.
So these are our students not attending their homeschool?
Correct.
And if, and if you...
That is a huge importance, but, but the purpose of this is just to say, of the kids you do have enrolled, where do they go to school versus where do they live?
Right, but you keep emphasizing that the birth rate has stopped and...
I'll get to that in a couple more slides.
Okay.
So Mr. Williams, just still hung up on the question there, the, have you looked at the argument which we always hear that people are leaving the district, you know, staying in Antioch but leaving the district, they're going, sending their kids to other school districts? Do you have statistics on that or is that, does that theory make any sense to you?
I would have to have the addresses of the kids of the other districts to prove that and I'd have to have where they moved from when they became enrolled in those districts and their first enrollment date and that day is just very problematic to come by. I'm sure some of that is true, but again, I think the overriding factor here was simply so much housing got built all at once and so many families just aged past childbearing years all at once.
Mm-hmm.
You know, a lot of people did stay put and their kids, you know, they start out and their kids were in kindergarten and third and they just graduated running up and, and we had a bubble going to the high school grades and a decline in kindergarten, as you'll see in a slide in a minute that's coming from everybody. But the point I want to make is, in the rightmost columns, you'll see the projected resident decline in the next three years by attendance area. Now, for example, I've got Kimball going down by 81 in three years, a significant chunk of that being due to Rocketship. Okay? But you have a net outflow of 44. Obviously, if you could reduce that net outflow of 44, you could reduce that student decline in the enrollment. Everybody following me on that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so those are significant numbers mainly due to the Rocketship School, but if you can cut back on that net outgoing attendance from those schools, then you would not have an enrollment reduction to the degree you're seeing in the right-hand columns. Does that make sense? Should I say that again?
So for this year, you have a total of negative 82, but in 2018, you have a negative 296.
Correct, in the bottom row, correct.
Okay.
But, but mainly for this attendance area is to talk about the attendance areas. The one other oddity down the bottom is Lone Tree and Lone Tree has a big drop in 2018 simply because there's a very large fourth grade class that graduates out that year. But otherwise, you'll notice in column 2017, which is now this school year, I really don't have a lot of changes. And that's not to say you didn't have one attendance area somewhere that had an odd, unusually high kindergarten or odd and usually small kindergarten, but aside from that factor, I really didn't expect a lot of change this year and the preliminary data I got today from Sahjiv, from Karen via Sahjiv, shows that these numbers pretty much panned out. The one exception, which Adam just explained for me at the start of the meeting, is you went from 156 kids in TK a year ago to 236 kids in TK this year, more than a 50% increase. And that was the result of spreading the classrooms around at more sites, making them more attractive to parents of TK-eligible kids. I don't think that's going to make a big difference in the enrollment in subsequent grades, but still you're helping your enrollment by an extra seven or 80 kids by that one step right there and maybe even more in future years. So just the bottom line of this is to say that really aside from the Rocketship School and one oddity in Lone Tree, the numbers don't scare me that much by the current attendance areas. Does that make sense to everybody? Next slide, please. This is quickly does the middle schools and the high schools, you'll see something that probably surprises everybody at Antioch Middle, me included. And the reason why is aside from the Rocketship School, there's also a large fourth grade class in the Feathers Antioch Middle graduating up. And so in 2018, it ha, it gets hit by a very large fourth grade class becoming sixth graders and that's why Antioch Middle actually has a net increase projected for 2018. Other than that, the rest of the numbers are all about where you'd expect them to be. Makes sense to everybody? Okay, next slide, please. Okay, like I said, I analyze where the kids live and where the changes of population have happened in where they live before I try and do anything else. And I, when I did my first study for you folks way back in 1995, I broke this district up into over 350 planning areas, which let me analyze the enrollment trends in each of those planning areas. And those planning areas, wherever feasible, isolate by a single housing type. By single housing type, I don't just mean apartments versus detached, I'm in the smallest detached homes versus the middle-class detached homes versus the new Melrose detached homes and I've analyzed student trends in all the situations and I aggregated into this table. There's more detail in the appendices to break these down further. What I call your minimal minority attached, you had a nominal gain of 76 kids. What I call your intermediate attached, you had a nominal gain of 112 kids. What I call your upgrade attached, you had a nominal, a truly nominal loss of 39. However, when you look at the bottom row for 2016 of those three categories, together they totaled to less than 2,500 students. If you go to the next slide, you'll see that when I get into the more affordable detached homes, we're talking 3,500 kids, when I talk into the middle to upper-middle income detached homes, we're talking around 10,000 kids. So the trends in the apartments and plexes are important, but they're not the big story. The big story is what's going on in single-family detached homes in this district. And unfortunately, in the more expensive homes, you lost over 1,000 kids in the last three years. I don't think it's because the kids go into their districts, I think it's just because of a bubble moved through. If you look at the top row for 2013 in that middle category, middle upper-income, you'll see that in, in 2013, you had 2,100 in K2 and 2,650 in grades 9, 11, two, three grade groups, a difference of 550 students. Just graduating that difference out and having a smaller K2 come in falling from 2,100 to 1,850, that's an 800 student difference right there. So clearly, the overwhelming majority of that 1,026 drop was simply because of the distributional advancement. Everybody with me on that? Okay. So, that, of course, is heavily concentrated in southeast Antioch and that's why your elementaries went down so much more in southeast Antioch than the rest of the district.
Did you take into account the vacant homes? Because we had an awful lot of bank-owned homes that probably attributed to that.
And you still have some, surprisingly, which...
Not, not as many though.
Yeah, yeah, right.
People are starting to buy now.
Right, yeah.
Do you factor that in? I'm just curious.
I factor that in as a trend and, and if, if I feel that that trend is bottoming out or coming back, I include it. But to me, the curve here was more important than that. In twenty-thirteen, we already had hit that vacancy level. I don't think the vacancy level went worse after twenty-thirteen. So whatever that factor was from two thousand nine to twenty-thirteen, I'm concerned most in the trend of the last three years. I do look back further, but I think from twenty-thirteen on, I don't think you had an increase in vacancies. So, I don't think that factored into that, this trend.
Anything on the horizon for new housing starts, or that's pretty quiet on that front?
I'm getting to that, it's significant, okay. Next slide, please. Okay, this is a very complex slide, but it's a very important aspect of what I talked about. The top yellow category is what I call non-Melrose District SFD areas, mainly completed from eighty-six to two thousand two, but most of them were completed by ninety-five, i.e. most of them are more than twenty years old at this point. And in two thousand three, in the rightmost column, you'll see we're averaging point seven four, or essentially three students in every four homes. Following me on that number? Now, that fell in twenty-sixteen to point four seven, or less than one student in every two homes. That is a normal pattern for housing getting old. But once you get down to about point four seven or point four five, the normal trend is to start bottoming out. So when I see you fell from point seven four to point four seven, I've seen that over and over again, that's about the bottom. And if you look at the bottom row, twenty-sixteen in yellow, you'll see the current distribution is twenty-one percent in K-two, twenty-four percent in three-five, twenty-two percent in six-eight, and twenty-two percent in nine-eleven. It's now a flat distribution. Back in two thousand three, it was nowhere near a flat distribution, it was twenty percent in K-two, and twenty-seven percent in nine-eleven. So we've reached the bottom of that bubble moving out. We now have a flat distribution, and what's going to drive it going further is what happens with the birth rate. So that population, those homes, I think have reached their bottom. I don't think they're going much lower, they might go to point four five, but they're basically at the bottom. So that declines over. Now, when I get into the Melrose areas completed between nineteen ninety and two thousand two, but mostly completed after ninety-four, you've fallen from point eight-two to point five-two, they're still a little bit farther to fall, but most of the fall is complete. And the distribution right now does have only nineteen percent in K-two, and twenty-six percent in nine-eleven. So it will fall a bit further in the next few years. But after that, it should be flattening out. And then the more recently completed detached homes, you again have a distribution of twenty percent in K-two, and twenty-six percent in nine-eleven, and that can come down further as well, and that's why that point five-five-three. Bottom line is, if I'm going to somewhere in the point fours, the group in the top's already basically done falling. The next two groups have farther to fall, but not nearly as fall as they've fallen in the last ten years. You with me on that? And that's one of the very strong reasons why I think the decline in the last ten years is over in terms of scope. Some may happen, but nothing to that degree. Okay? Next slide, please. This is a hard slide to read here, but this just sort of shows how that distribution thing I just talked about goes in a curve. This is a generic chart I showed everybody. It varies in height by district, it varies in timing by district, but the general shape happens with everybody. In the first year, all those homes get completed, in this example, there's around a point five student generation rate. That's a little bit higher than is occurring nowadays, but it was common ten, fifteen years ago. You'll notice the majority of those kids were in the elementary grades, at thirty. Now, by the time you get out seven, eight, nine years, the whole curve has come up, but the elementary curve has come up as well. You following me on that? And when you get out about ten, eleven years, the total curve is still growing, but the elementary curve is already starting to decline. That's because the bubble's hitting the high school grades, at the same time, the elementary numbers, kindergarten numbers are starting to decline. Then when you get about twenty-five years out, that bottoming out's happening, and it starts coming back up. For a lot of your neighborhoods, you're approaching that bottom. And the normal trend after that is to start coming back. Does that make sense to everybody? Okay, next slide, please. This is birth rate, and it's kind of complex to discuss this, but I'm comparing births to approximately kindergarten enrollments five years later. Okay? But when I talk about two thousand three to two thousand seven, you're really talking about kindergarten from two thousand eight to twenty-twelve. You following me? And, and so when the economy was booming, and all those kids were being born because everybody was doing great, and all the homes were being bought, those kids showed up in school, on the vacant home issue that Diane talked about, five years later. So, the average, annual average from two thousand three to two thousand seven, in the two Antioch zip codes, was about fifteen hundred and sixty-six births per year. You've plummeted all the way to below fourteen hundred, or off by more than ten percent during the recession. Right now, we are in, excuse me, the year I did this study, which is twenty-sixteen-seventeen, was the last year of a kindergarten tying to a recession year. The kindergartens going forward are tying to births in the recovery years. You following me on that? So in twenty-twelve, and I don't know why that blue isn't showing here, it must have blacked out for some reason, but that should be about thirteen hundred and, or fourteen hundred. Anyways, the bottom line is, in twenty-eleven, which correlated to last fall's kindergarten, was the lowest birth year on this chart. And in twenty-fifteen, fourteen sixty, is the highest birth year since two thousand seven. So, for the next four kindergartens, including this year's kindergarten, you should have more kindergartners than you had during the years from twenty-thirteen to twenty-sixteen. Rocketship will dip, cut into that, but won't offset that completely. And that's for the housing that existed. Now for the new housing. Go ahead.
So only Rocketship, not any other, other surrounding charter schools, just Rocketship?
In terms of your district, I think it's the only one. I think ACH is going to have a standard ratio, whatever they're taking, that ratio's just going to continue. Okay. Next slide, please. Okay. When I analyze recently-built homes in this district, mainly stuff built in the last five years, especially for detached housing, not for attached housing, you're averaging about one student in every three units in the first year. However, there's about forty-three in TK-two, and only about twenty-five in six-eight. Larger number nine thirteen, because that covers four and a half grades. But nonetheless, when you have twice as many in TK-two as in six-eight, that tells me, these people moving in are young families, just as I've been talking about, and there's a lot of preschools about to come in. So that point three-four is probably going to be point five or higher within five or six years. Okay? Your attached housing, of which we don't have anything built recently in this district, unfortunately, but what we do have is comparable to what's likely to be built, we're averaging about one student in every six units. That's actually very high for apartments and townhouses. It shows that families want to get into this district still, rather than move out of this district. And then for affordable housing, we're averaging about one student in every two units. Now, remember that point three-four. Next slide. In the next five years, I'm projecting about fifteen hundred detached homes. In the following five years, I'm projecting about thirteen hundred detached homes. So we have a total in the next decade, if I projected that completely, that year, twenty-eight more detached homes. And if we're to average, over time, about a half student per unit, we'd be talking fourteen hundred more kids. Now, where is this located? Among other things, the south side of Buchanan, city of Pittsburgh, is just okay to a massive development. It's going to start coming online in about two to three years. I forget the numbers, they'll tell my head, but something like a thousand detached homes, and some apartments as well. We also have all the stuff in southeastern-most Emno Grant, and easternmost Carmen Dragon, that'll be being built, some of which are going in right now. And then, in the five to ten-year timeframe, we have a bunch of stuff in Diablo Vista's attendance area. So, after having had a low because of recession, and the slow recovery from recession, we have another boom in housing coming through. Is the boom anything like what we had from two thousand, two thousand five? No. But nonetheless, in the next five years, we're talking something like sixteen hundred housing units, most of which are detached homes. Very few for this fall, I projected thirty-four, which are solely in Almond Ridge, but starting thereafter, next to Cunyatta Valley Road, we've got a development going in right now. So we have significant new housing numbers coming in, we have recovering birth numbers, we have new housing numbers coming in, and we have student generation rates in the detached homes that should be bottoming out. So, that's why, if the elementary level wasn't for the Rocketship, I would actually say you'd have a net gain in the next five years. Next slide, please. Does that make sense to everybody? Questions?
I have a neighbor who owns two homes, but he continuously rents out to Section Eight. And so, now we have five new students at my son's schools. Do you track that? I mean, it's all, he always has tenants, and they attend the school.
Only if, only if an aggregate, I think, that is dramatically changing, there always have some neighborhoods where they're going down, and some neighborhoods are going up. When I combine them all together, and what I see is what worries about me, now, if that was happening all over the district, then obviously it would show up. But for every case that is happening, I think it's happening the other way for other reasons. We still do have some vacant homes in the district, for example, nothing that we used to, but still do have some vacancies. So, but that's another reason why I expect the enrollment will not decline like it has in the last decade.
Okay. And my second question, in regards to special education, are you tracking the students who originally were students here, and were paying for them to go to other schools elsewhere?
I'm assuming that percentage will remain constant. I only worry about private schools, or special ed programs in other counties, or things like that, if the ratio is likely to change significantly. In this case, with a new charter school coming online, that impact is a ratio that's going to change for Kimball and Fremont and Marsh, and to a lesser extent, Belshaw. But unless I, there's some reason to say, you're going to abandon the SDC and send them all to county, or something like that, I'm going to assume that that ratio's going to stay the same.
But especially in this case, it's not all county, it's a.
Well, but whatever, wherever it's being distributed now, unless you tell me there's going to be a program change that's going to alter that, that pattern, I'm going to assume it's going to stay the same.
But they're considered still our students?
I'm projecting for the kids in your classrooms.
On the classrooms?
Yes.
Okay, and Antioch Charter is just like Rocketship? I mean, that's still a charter school.
Yeah, but that, but that number's there. So unlike Rocketship, they're taking a certain number of your kids, have been taking a certain number of your kids, and I'm projecting that, that pattern to maintain. So unless they double in size, or bulldoze a wing, or something crazy like that, I'm just going to assume they're continuing to take the number of kids they're taking now in the future.
And you've already factored that in?
Yes. I'm saying, with, with the two Antioch charter schools here, what have been the trends with those schools here? And I'm going to assume, as long as the Antioch charter schools stay like they are, those trends for the residual kids that you get are going to stay the same. The only thing that's changing from the trends the last three years is the addition of the Rocketship school.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else? Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good to see you, everybody.
Very informative.
I have a question. Yes. First, we have Julia on this item. Welcome back.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the board and community members. We should see with optimism the student decline. Right now, we have the perfect opportunity to make a doctor out of every student by reducing class sizes to ten students per one teacher and two class aides. We must value every student, research the reasons why students left out of mainstream education, reach out to expelled or homeschooled students, and bring them back to mainstream schools. Get rid of policies such as zero tolerance policies, removing gang, brandishing city police officers, or private security corporations, because when we send armed officers to confront the misbehavior of underdeveloped young students, we are horrifying, traumatizing, destroying lives, futures, families, our own communities, and prompting students to leave schools, or parents whipping their children to other school districts. By addressing the low number of students and school decline, we're addressing the fact that education is a right, not a privilege, and we must solve with words. Please, humanity, love, any student's misbehavior. Also, please, extend the school hours from eight AM to six PM, give free meals, twenty recesses. In this manner, the students and parents will bring their children to our district. In summary, add more functional programs, not enlarged class sizes. Thank you.
We have another card, Mr. Peyton.
We have two on eight.
Alan Peyton, speaking on this item.
I just had a question, whether or not the twenty-five hundred housing units proposed for around the BART station were taken into account in this five-to-ten-year projection, which was the city had to do in order to get the money for the BART extension.
Mr. Williams?
Off the top of my head, I don't remember what portion I included, but some are included in your timeframe, and some are seen as by. But because of some issues with the data, I actually ran the student projection out five years, not ten years, and none of that BART housing expected within the next five years, so it would not affect the five-year student forecast. It would affect this ten-year student forecast if I had provided it, and there's still a gray area of what percentage that total will be done in ten years, and what might go past, but it really doesn't affect the five-year student forecast at all.
Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. Velma Wilson?
That was a lot of data he just presented, and confused me, and probably confused some of y'all. But I will say, you know, one of the things that I noticed that he, you know, I like his candidness, because he kind of like me, but I don't think we have to be too concerned, because I have this strange feeling, no. I just believe that all these people that's gung-ho Rocketship, and gung-ho thinking that they're the savior to whatever, I just think that that's not going to impact what's going on in our district. And if everybody in our district that truly loves and supports what's going on in our district, and know that we have some phenomenal kids doing some phenomenal things, we have some state-of-the-art things happening, look at, look at what they just did to Antioch High School. That's mind-blowing to me, and just to see, in that time, I will say Orchard Park is still on the radar to get that gym, but I will say that I think we have to just stay the course and stay knowing what we're doing, and if you're in the, you're in this district, and you are supporting and working and trying to advocate for the district, we shouldn't have that problem. But if you're behind the scenes, not advocating for the district, and you encouraging families to leave the district, go to Rocketship, you'll be quite surprised when they get disappointed what Rocketship truly has to offer. So I just think that we need to be mindful of that, and not be scared with no numbers, because a parent like me, who's out there trying to make sure that we're doing and advocating the best for our, for our kids, you know, I'm proud. Yesterday, we had the UCAN College Fair, and it was just amazing to me to see so many students get awarded scholarships. I'm a product of a child, she's a junior, who got a full ride scholarship. So that's telling us that our kids in this district are doing what they need to do to get to the next level, and I'm just, I think we need to start focusing on that, and everybody collectively, you on the school board, need to be focusing on what you are in the position to do, which is to help support the district, and the effort of what our teachers and our educators are doing on a day-in and day-out basis. That's all I got to say.
Okay, we now move to item number seven, hearings. We have none. Public presentations, item number eight, we have none, which brings us to consent items, item number nine.
And there are revisions on the dais. Ms. Romeo is not here this evening, to J and K.
Where are the revisions?
J and K.
The personnel. As people have been hired, the agenda is posted before, and then changes happen.
So revisions, J and K personnel, anything else to be polled or questioned, or?
Letter E. So, excuse me, so we're not voting on J? Is that what you're saying? For the class certificate?
Yes.
We're not?
We are.
We are. J and K with revisions. With revisions. Do you want to comment on J, or?
Yes, on J.
On J. So we have E and J to be reviewed. Anything else at this point? If not, we'll start with E.
Okay. I have a question in regards to the strategic threat management for two hundred and seventy-three thousand, two hundred and thirty-three dollars and forty-eight cents. And also, the education services, right, second, or the third one underneath for two hundred and seventy-three thousand. I would like to know.
Yeah, this is a contract approved by the Board of Education, and these represent the purchase orders that go along with that contract.
By the extent of the security, what, for students in the district, what is occurring?
Well, we have officers who are with strategic threat management, who respond to situations at school sites. As you know, our police department in Antioch is oftentimes overburdened, and so they help
While we're on the subject, Mr. Mims would like to comment on 9E.
Yes, just on the funding source, various. There's no such thing as a funding source for various. So where did this money come in at for the $273,090 some dollars for student, district student staff security? I mean, so there's no such thing as various funding sources. You need, to be transparent with the LCAP and the LCFF, you have to identify the source of your funding. And so, and then it is a new amount. So can I get an answer on it's a new amount, so where's it coming from?
Are we able to answer that at this moment, or will we get back to Mr. Mims?
We'll get back to Mr. Mims.
On the funding.
We'll get back.
I want to remind the board, on items, with dealing with money, the LCFF is, they're quite adamant in terms of being transparent. And so when you put something like various, it means nothing to me because the funding source is not being identified, and it is problematic.
Ms. San Maria?
Yes, actually, various means, you know, there's more than one funding, and it's the combination actually of the top two lines, which is LCAP site safety and LCAP credit recovery. So there are just two items of funding.
So you have the total listed?
Yes, and then the total says various.
Because there's more than one.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, under the LCFF, you know, I mean, I understand what you're saying, but your LCAP is not your funding source. The LCFF is the funding source that funded LCAP. So my concern is, where is the money coming from, from the LCFF? I mean, LCAP is the plan, your programs.
Well, LCAP is the program, and LCAP comes because of the supplemental and concentration grants, so meaning the funding source would be the supplemental and concentration grant.
That's what I wanted to know. And I'm trying to, you know, I'm not so about the legality of that either, coming out of that funding source.
Julia on 9E.
Good evening, members of the board again and members of the community. I appreciate your attention. That nearly $300,000 could be better spent into hiring more psychologists, classes that reinforce moral values, human values. Please, I beg you in the name of the students attending Antioch Unified School District, please get rid of strategic security corporations because that is not how we're gonna approach rationally, professionally, humanly, a child. There is nothing to fear from a three-year-old who's throwing a tantrum, or a nine-year-old or a 12-year-old. They're not gonna kill no one. We must be able to solve and address the situation with words. Please, put more psychologists, more classes that teach students how to behave and interact properly socially among students in society with the teachers who teach them. Thank you so much.
Item number J.
I notice again, we're hiring another vice principal, and it looks like the start date was August, but we're voting on this after the start date, and I have no idea the background of this one particular vice principal.
It's actually not a new position. This was, Mr. Cooper was placed at Live Oak High School last year, and there was a question of restructuring. However, he does the same duties as the other principals of Bidwell and Prospects, and so to have him at a lower classification did not seem appropriate. And now that we're not restructuring, it's time to bring him in line with the actual duties that he's doing.
So you're changing his title?
Correct.
You mean, is this, I'm trying to read these, is this normally enlisted, that I would know that he was, is there a code or?
The information went in the Friday board last week, I believe.
Yes, it was.
Explaining this or the week before?
I had a question about that.
Question from Ms. Trustee Vinsal.
So I also noted, so I saw the one for the vice principal to principal, and then, so it would be special ed director to special ed senior director.
Correct.
Okay, because in the board packet, it was listed differently.
Correct. That's what one of the changes is.
Okay, and then, so the title changed, but nothing else?
Correct. What do you mean by nothing else?
No income change?
Yes, it goes along with the classification, the income change.
So for both staff or just for the?
For both staff.
Okay, I'd like to at some point get like a different report on that, because that piece wasn't clear. I have the dollar amount that was clear, but for the title change, so you're saying it's consistent with?
Yes, and you can find that information online. It's part of the senior management schedule. You can see what the change was for each employee if you'd like.
Okay. I recall the letter, I received that, but based on the California School Board Association, we should have a list of the principals and the vice principals at school sites and be informed at the beginning of the school year. Is that possible, that that can be done?
Yes, we have.
We received it, I've received mine. I get it every year. Maybe I can get another copy if you've misplaced yours, but it came in our board packets.
I mean, as far as new hires, that was not specified, I did receive that. I don't know who's, how many years the principal has been there. There's a new hire at Dallas Ranch. That's my understanding.
Which the board approved. The board actually came before the board and they voted on the approval?
Right, I'm just saying, as far as, I don't.
Perhaps you've not got another document that has new names on it, which might be.
Would you like an updated site list? I have sent them, but is that what you want to know?
No, I have a template from the California School Board Association, so I'll just, I'll give it to her, located on site.
Okay, no further questions. Is anyone wishing to make a motion?
I move approval of all of the items with the revisions.
We have a motion to approve. Trustee Gibson Gray, do I hear a second?
Sir.
And we have a second. Trustee Hag. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Moves this to item number 10.
Yes, Ms. San Maria, would you like to introduce 10A, please?
10A.
Yes, we are going to present the unaudited actual for this year 2016-17, so you can bear with me. So for the unaudited actual, I'll start with a general fund. Combination of unrestricted and restricted. Financial report on page three. So we're going to compare the unaudited actual versus the estimated actual that was presented during the budget presentation. For total revenues, the unaudited actual is at $190,787,753, which is 346,560 higher than the estimated actual of 190,441,194. For the total expenditures, unaudited actuals is what, $187,138,72, which is 3.4 million lower than the estimated actual expenditures of $190 million. Then there's a financing sources or uses of $800,000, and I want to emphasize this because on the other funds, I will also emphasize another $800,000 item. So this is a transfer out to deferred maintenance. So from the estimated actual, it came through at $800,000. So for the net increase in fund balance, the unaudited actual shows a 2.8 million increase in the fund balance compared to a decrease of $982,000 for the estimated actual, bringing a net difference of 3.8 million, which is an increase in the fund balance. So on page four, we're going to explain the details or the breakdown of what the 3.8 million dollar is all about. So on the revenue side, the LCFF source revenue, there was an increase to gap funding rate from 55.3% to 56.08%. That gave us an additional income of $219,091. Then for the federal revenue, there is a decrease in income of $417,000. That came about because there was less Title I expenditures on the federal revenues, which resulted in unearned revenue, meaning it reduced our revenue. On the other state revenue, there are less than planned grant expenditures and the funding carried forward to 1718 school year. That's a decrease of 66,720, specifically the California Partnership Academies Program and the Business Technology Academy. Now, for the local revenue, there is a gross increase of 611,213, and that's comprised of several items. For example, for the medical administrative activities or the MA program, there's an increase in reimbursement of about $200,000. Then for the special ed apportionment from JPA CELPA, there's an increase of another $230,000. And then for the interest income and donations, there was an increase of $200,000. If you add all these, that's the 611,000 increase. So let's go to the expenditure side. For the salaries and benefits, there was a net decrease of 161,408. This was based on a reduction in the planned substitute, extra hours, and overtime expenditures budget. For the books and supplies, it appears that the expenditure was lower by 572,000, and this represents the textbooks that were ordered before June 30, but we never received by June 30. So that means it's gonna be spent out in the following year, which is the fiscal year 1718.
Can I interrupt for a second? So just to clarify, so the books have been ordered, we just haven't been charged for them, invoiced for them, correct? So we expect that that 572 will come out?
In 1718 school year.
We're giving a snapshot in time?
Yes.
Okay.
Right, in the current year, not the last year. So for services and other operating expenses, it looks like there's a net increase or decrease in expenditures of 2.6 million. And these are the reasons why. For the special ed county office of ed per student expense, the expenditure was reduced by 15,000 per student, and there were about 80 students for that program. So that alone is 1.2 million. So this is a good thing because there was, you know, the special ed program, you know, always tries to make sure they minimize the expenditures. For residential program, there's about three kids that eventually did not go into that program, and that's 250,000 each, thus saving the district $750,000. For Oakley deaf and hard of hearing, there's 100,000 per student. And then for legal services, we increased the PO by 250,000, but we ended up not spending or not actually paying for those legal expenses. So that's a perceived increase or increase in the fund balance or decrease in the expenditures. And then for the Title I supplemental education services, there was the tutoring decrease of 200,000, and then for the utilities, there's a small decrease in expenditures by about $85,000. So in essence, even though it shows, you know, there's an increase in fund balance of 2.6, these are not really extra monies, but more like, you know, efficiencies or reduction in expenditures, not errors in computing the estimated expenses during the budget season. And then lastly, the capital outlay, there were reduced to capital asset expenses about $98,000.
I think the last time you did this, I asked, and I apologize if I didn't, but if we could have totals on this page?
Oh, okay.
You know, the revenues total align, and then the expenditures, and then the net would be really helpful.
Yeah.
Because I was just trying to do it on my calculator.
Well, these represent the.
Right, but it's easier on this page.
Yeah, I understand, yeah, it's better if we add them again.
Yeah, because you mentioned something about tutoring. We had, because we didn't use it, that was 200,000 put back into the budget. So, yeah, it'd be helpful to get those details, because I know we did sign contracts, but if the contracts aren't fulfilled, you know, it'd be good to show that, so we don't think that the contracts are out there, but the work hasn't been done and the contracts haven't paid.
Okay.
But for my purpose, just the totals would be sufficient. I don't need the detail.
Teresa, in regards to the overtime for substitute teaching, is this because the more substitute teachers were hired?
No, less substitute. Well, the budget.
Yeah, the budget.
The budget is over than the actual expenses.
But they were extra hours.
No, we saved money.
No, we saved money. There was no extra hours overpaid.
Okay.
So we got this reported into June, we got a report today, and basically it's a higher balance than we had in June. Of what, 3.8 million?
But again, that is not a constant number, it's a snapshot in time, because we may be receiving the invoices for some of those services past the June 30. We had to take the snapshot, June 30.
Yes.
Snapshots are always that way.
Yeah.
So it's not really an increase, it's just they have, it has not been processed yet, so we have to include it in our balance.
Exactly.
Thank you.
And some is an increase.
So I'm gonna talk about the other funds, which start on page eight. So these are called special revenue funds, number one being Fund 11 or adult ed. Currently, it shows an ending fund balance of 703,082, but these funds are already committed because for the following year, which is 1718, we have budgeted a lot of expenditures for the adult ed program, like hiring new teachers, and also for the central kitchen, not central kitchen, for the culinary arts kitchen, it's also budgeted. So we're, you know, doing a full blast operations program for special ed for the year 1718. So we're going to give you a report for that eventually. Fund 13 is cafeteria program. It ended with a fund balance of $482,000, so that's a good thing, because initially we thought it's gonna be $250,000. Now, for the deferred maintenance, this is what I wanted to emphasize. On the general fund side, I emphasize an 800,000 transfers out. If you look at this, there's a transfer in of 800,000. So this number came from the general fund. So general fund is an expenditure, and then deferred maintenance is an income. On page nine, there's a building fund. The fund balance for the building fund, Fund 21 is 28.8 million, and it has two components. One is Measure C, which has about $9.9 million fund balance, and Measure B, which Sajib reported earlier this evening, there's a fund balance of 18.8, but again, you know, most of these have already been budgeted, you know, into the programs or into the projects that we're going to do. On Fund 25, capital facilities fund, the fund balance is 1.8. This is comprised of developer fees and RDA funds. For Fund 40, special reserve fund for capital projects, there's a 1.16 million fund balance, and these are mostly leases and rentals, cell tower lease, facility use labor, and interest expense. Page 10, capital projects fund, this is about the CFD 1994 levy for Melrose and 2004 Melrose projects. The fund balance as of this time is 887,000. And then Fund 71 is the retiree benefit funds, and fund balance is 5.8 million. Foundation fund is $50,000, and there are two, there are three items from the foundation fund. The Tom Milan is 32,000, Janet Romo is 15,000, and Antioch Foundation, 3,245. So in conclusion, you know, staff recommends that the Board of Trustees approve the Antioch Unified School District 1617 unaudited actual financial statement. of Unified School District 1617 and audited actual financial statements as presented at its meeting September 13, 2017.
Any questions?
Any questions?
Yes, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Trustee, why?
So, I don't see $9,000 on here. I'm just curious, where training and board development, where does that money come from? When it's paid out?
On what page?
I'm not the same in the budget.
You don't see?
$9,000.
$9,000?
Yeah, any of the training, the board, where does that money come from, from the district credit card? Is that?
Oh.
Yeah, where is this money coming from?
It's out of the general fund.
It's out of the general fund?
Yes.
So, it shouldn't be a challenge for us to attend these governance trainings? We have the money, is that correct?
Well, there's a budget, a separate budget for the board, is that what you're asking?
Right.
Yeah.
Man, I don't know the budget. It's never been revealed since I've been elected.
We can give you the amount.
Yeah, I would like to know.
I think it's part of board policy, the budget.
$3,000.
Yeah.
No, I'm not talking about the total amount that's available for us to.
Yeah, we can give you.
Because we have a district credit card, is that correct?
What's that?
Yes, yes, that's correct.
You don't have.
Did we not?
I thought we agreed on $3,000 per board member.
Yes.
Times five is $15,000.
We agreed to start with that amount, but we were gonna review it again, because we'd never set a budget amount for board trainings, because people.
But as of right now.
Right.
The budget is three times five.
Can we revisit, whatever.
Yeah, we can revisit it, but we've never set, we've never ever had a budget for board training and a budgeted amount, so it's in there. But I got a question. Where is the supplemental concentration? You can just kind of point that out, so I don't.
Sure. So, it's on the LCFF sources.
That's on page five.
On page three.
My page is, okay, I'm looking at.
And if you look there, the object codes 8080 to 8099.
Eighty, ninety.
And then we have a detailed Saks report or CDE form, which is this book, which I know you have. So, if we look at all the individual items, you will see the concentration.
Okay, thank you. But it doesn't show directly on here, it only shows as LCFF sources.
Yes, this is the summary.
Okay, so to see the exact amount, I'd have to go through and look at the detail.
Or we can give it to you.
Okay, I'll look for it, thank you. Thank you.
We have a comment card, Willie Mims on 10A.
The supplemental concentration grant fund question, I had raised that at Vallejo at the last board meeting, so I didn't have to answer that. They're not, they don't show it. But it should be on their budget report, though. One question I had is the, you know, I'm listening to the $800,000 transferred out of the deferred maintenance. It was transferred out of deferred maintenance into, I guess, a drone fund, then transferred back in. So, my question is, why was it transferred in and then transferred out? What was the purpose of these transfers going back and forth?
So, the money is transferred from the general fund into the deferred maintenance fund, because we have to account for separate deferred maintenance projects, that's a CDE requirement. So, from the general fund, we're giving money to the deferred maintenance program.
Oh, but I thought.
But it's not transferred back.
But I thought you said that the $800,000 was originally transferred out of the deferred maintenance.
No, it's transferred out of the general fund into the deferred maintenance program.
So, what was transferred into then? Because something came out, something came out of, you said it came out of the general fund, but I thought, I thought it came, I thought I heard you say it came out of the deferred, the transfer, $800,000 out of the deferred maintenance, and then into the general fund, and it was transferred back in, that's what I thought I heard, that's what.
No, it wasn't.
Okay, well, I accept my apology.
Good evening, members of the board and community members. In regards to the funding going to books and food, we, the community, we're not getting our tax monies worth and reciprocity, because the books should be designed by accredited teachers, teachers who are in class, who know their students, who know how they should create a first or fifth grade program, right, not by individuals that do not know our students, do not know our classrooms, do not know how to develop kids, such as Walmart, Bill Gates, Pearson, they do not know our children, they do not work as hard as the teacher. So, for that reason, we should leave to the parent design a smaller, simple, easy-to-do program for the students. And please remember that we must create, the teachers will create a program that will help the students develop at that age, not for when they are students of university or colleges. And also about food and cafeterias. I've noticed that the increasing high amounts of sugar, cholesterol in the contents of foods, and as well as modified GMO items, elements in the foods, it is very dangerous to feed any human being, let alone a child who's developing, because the main component in GMO food, it's pesticides. Pesticides kill any kind of rat, any kind of pest, and that's what, it's just mind-bothering the content of pesticides in GMO foods. And then this pesticide causes automatically astmas, heart disease, respiratory diseases, autism, it exacerbates and makes worse the autism health status of any autistic student. So, we must be able to do like the French people do in France. They create the food from scratch, from natural elements, and the students love eating breakfast, lunch, and dinner at the schools. We should do the same, we can do that for our students, thank you.
Can I make a comment on that?
Yes, please.
I did see on the news, there is some funding coming out for more healthy programs, so I understand what you're saying, and I was gonna address that maybe later in the year. It's almost $70,000 available from the state for a healthy food program, and the lunches are, you know, not the healthiest. There, there you go.
I've had a request to take a small break. Oh, that's right. We have a.
But I do want to make a comment.
This item addresses communications from trustee Vince Owen, possible communications to district administrators, directing hard to communicate inquiries to requests for information or documents, funneling through the superintendent and not communicating with other district staff unless authorized to do so during the next six months. So, we'll start with public comment, and then we'll have a board comment on this. Willie Mims.
To the board, I, Willie Mims, I serve in East County NAACP and also official of Black Association. I'm here to oppose this letter, this first action option item that you brought up at the last school board meeting, which I thought was illegal, because it was not part of the agenda, and the people did not have access to this information that you had, which is a violation of the Brown Act, because I was not allowed an opportunity to speak on those action options that you brought up at the end of your discussion. Now, in terms of the letter itself, the letter is tantamount to the silencing of a board member. Now, I'm not sure if you're within the legal right to do that. She was elected by the people, not by the board, so we're gonna get that straight. Now, in terms of the letter itself, in the first paragraph, last part of the sentence, it says that the, that she commanded over the service of two district employees, and that she used her position to pressure two employees into making a decision that was contrary to board policy. Now, my question to you is, if she put pressure on these employees, did they acquiesce? Did they do what she commanded them to do? And if they did not, then this letter here is full of flaws. You should state the facts. The facts are, she may have, as you claim, as they claim, put pressure, but did that pressure result in them making a decision to do what she wanted them to do? Now, I submit to you, no, that did not happen. So, Mr. Rubik, this letter should be taken out and thrown into the garbage can where it belongs.
Attorney Grantham, do you wish to make any comment on the Brown Act?
If you have a question, I'm happy to answer a question.
Yes, please.
What is the question?
The question is, do you, well, how would you address this allegation of a Brown Act violation?
That was raised by Mr. Mims.
Yes, by Ms. Mims.
So, to the extent that Mr. Mims is raising a Brown Act violation regarding what happened at the last board meeting, there was a discussion of the investigator's findings, and I was present at that board meeting. That discussion was agendized. There was discussion about what action, potential actions could be taken. There was a non-substantive vote in terms of bringing forward items for action. Those items are on the agenda tonight. Two of them are under this present item. I think one is under another item. So, those items have not been acted on, they are before the board tonight, so any actual substantive action on the items will take place if there is a decision by the board to do so at tonight's board meeting. So, in my opinion, there has not been a Brown Act violation.
Would you call that general direction? Would that be one way of calling that, what happened in the last meeting?
At the last meeting, there was general direction given to you as board president to bring back items for board consideration. Those items, again, are before the board tonight, and any actual action, if the board chooses to go in that direction, will happen tonight at this public meeting.
Any other board questions, trustee questions?
So, yes, thank you, Mr. President. We were supposed to vote, actually, on the findings, is that correct?
You haven't voted to do anything yet.
But it was on the agenda.
Tonight, on the agenda is to vote.
No, I mean, the last board.
Last time, there was, you weren't voting on the investigator's findings. There was no, you don't have to vote on the investigator's findings.
That's not my understanding, no.
Those are her findings, they're not yours. And so, the purpose of the last meeting was to discuss those findings and to, which was done, and again, there's no requirement for board action on the findings. You don't adopt those findings, they're not yours, they're the investigators. You, as a board, then decide what to do, if anything, in light of those findings.
Okay. From my understanding, well, my experience, I'm the new board member, and I was not even privy to any of this, I was not privy, there was an investigator that was hired, that's supposed to be, as a board, we should vote on that or discuss that? Is that true?
It depends on your practice. Your superintendent, as the superintendent, has the authority to undertake investigations, to have staff do that, to go with an outside investigator. She has the ability to contract with people to fulfill certain obligations. There may be instances when she brings those contracts back to the board for ratification, but she does have certain authority to do things that you may not necessarily be aware of at the outset because of the time constraints. When complaints get brought, there's really tight timelines in terms of conducting the investigations. And so, if the superintendent decides that an investigation is necessary, she may have it investigated internally or externally, and she's going to take the action she needs to take in order to ensure compliance with those timelines.
So, to spend $20,000 and not ask the board as a whole to vote, that's illegal.
I'm not going to.
You're spending $20,000 on an investigator.
I have no idea how much was spent on the investigator, and I'm not going to comment on the legality of that.
Well, it's a waste of money, that's what I'm saying. It's a waste of money. And my research, I contacted the California School Board Association, they've never heard of six-month probation at all. Do you have any history of this ever happening in any other district?
I know that boards take a lot of different actions when it comes to actions against trustees. Censure is an option, there are other actions where board presidents will issue directives to board members if there are issues in terms of board member conduct. So, again, I think that they run the gamut in terms of what potential actions. It's for the board to make a decision as to what action, if any, it wants to take, but it does have options available to it.
Okay, and then also, I didn't see any policies violated, and then the second letter comes, and then all of a sudden, she's violating a policy. She has to violate a policy in regards to an investigator being hired when the board did not vote as a whole? That's a violation.
Again.
You can't hire an investigator without all of us being aware of that.
Your superintendent does have the authority, you, as a board, have delegated certain authority to your superintendent to enter into contracts, and she is able to do that. I don't know the extent of this particular contract, but your superintendent has the authority to do that. That is the role of the superintendent. There are certain things that she has to do, there may be people that she has to hire to perform certain services that can't come before the board because of timing. So, again, that's the decision that your superintendent made here. In terms of the board policy being violated, I didn't make that determination, that's the determination the investigator made. Those are the investigator's findings. It's up for the board to ultimately decide what, if anything, it wants to do in light of those findings.
Okay, and it seems the issue was that the investigator contacted her numerous times, is she should have had the time to hire an attorney? I mean, I don't see, I wouldn't have spoke to the investigator.
So.
I don't understand this.
Right, again, it's my understanding that there were at least 13 attempts at contact between March and June of 2017 of this year, and an investigator will make attempts to interview a person, an employee, whoever it is that the complaint is against. They generally will make several efforts. This investigator made numerous efforts. And ultimately, it's for the investigator to decide, enough time has elapsed, I've made enough attempts, I feel comfortable moving forward with my finding. That is a decision the investigator has to make, and again, in this case, the investigator made that after attempts to reach out to the trustee.
Okay, well, I vote to remove it from the agenda.
Okay.
So, I'm gonna make comments. Who's next?
Thank you.
You have a motion.
Clarifications. Other comments from the trustees?
So, actually.
Well, I have something to say about this. Go ahead.
So, I do want to say that I think this letter is improper, and I'm objecting to it, and I do have my counsel with me today, and so I just want to go on public record to say that. And I am also challenging the findings, because there's no evidence, there's no factual evidence, and the information listed in here is conclusionary. And so, I'm objecting to everything stated in this letter, and, you know, it's improper for a board to undertake this. I am an elected official, elected by the community, to serve the children and parents and people in the community, and so I see this as improper.
Any other comments?
I would like to comment, because I made the motion last time. I was caught off guard, and I said six months, and I'm talking to the community and employees, they said that's a little difficult. So, in the letter, I think it should just be changed to 2017, 2018 school year, because I don't want anybody to have to say, well, it's January or whatever, do I, you know, is this letter still in effect? So, that would be my recommendation. And then also, you know, I'm gonna get back to what I said before, 25 days to not respond to an investigator's call, another 15 to not respond. We go with what we have, and right now, the conclusions are, to me, are there, and I would like to move forward with this, with the change that I just said.
Okay, and is this based on the policy? And is this based on the policies, Diane, that Walter stated?
Yes, you violated policies. They're in the document.
Which one? 9,000? Which one are you referring to?
Okay, if you read the report.
I read it.
They're in there.
Okay. So, when I initially started, 9,000 did not exist in the ante act. You gave me a binder. No, it did not. It did not. It's not here. It started with 9,005, and there was about 11 policies missing from here. And then, we submitted it to the California School Board Association, and the California School Board, I just received the password to Gammet, which was supposed to be available to all board members. I'm not familiar, if you're aware, but the superintendent has the password to. And I looked up this particular policy, and it doesn't align with what Walter is accusing her of. So, he said 9,005, which is the role of the board members. It says, number one, keep the district focused on learning and achievement for all students. This has been revised without a vote from the board. The original one on Gammet 9,000 does not state that. It totally has been changed. Number two, communicate on a common vision that is not with the California School Board Association. It's totally different. So, this is illegal. This is not ethical. It's a violation, an ethical violation, it appears to me, because this has been revised based on this resolution that you're accusing her from 9,005 policy. I have here the original one. Two, value and support and advocate for public education. That is what trustee Vincent was doing. This does not pertain to a six-month probation. And number three, Walter put, operate openly with trust and dignity. The state of California even says, recognize and respect differences of perspective and style on the board among staff and students, parents, and the community. So, that was revised. Number four, Walter stated, govern in a dignified and professional manner, treating everyone with civility and respect. This one says, act with dignity and understand the implication of demeanor and behavior. So, this has totally been revised without the vote of the board. And when I looked this up, I'm totally confused. So, were you aware of this, Walter?
I'm not sure what you mean by, was I aware of this?
Well, the policy you accused Diane, I mean Deborah, is 9,005.
Well, first clarification here is I didn't accuse her of anything. These were the Fact Finders words citing board policy. They weren't my citations. So, that's, I think, a fundamental point here.
And the board policies are all listed. I'm reading them. So, anybody can have access to the.
I've read them, too.
Yeah, but they've been revised. Based on, it says here, whereas Deborah Vincent has not been effective based on the policy 9,005, and then, it's one, you know, number one, two, three, four, five, and then, California School Board Association, this isn't aligned together at all. So, it's not, I spoke to the California School Board Association, and this is illegal. This is ethically a violation.
If you look it online, it matches to that.
No, it doesn't.
It matches. Not to California school boards, to ours.
That's the one that we follow, Diane.
No, no, we have our own board policies.
No, no, you cannot, you revise them without a vote.
I'm not going to. And there are the revised policies on here. There's eight things, and if you read them, they're there.
But, okay, so, when I go back to the original one you gave me, it said, it's not here. It's not here.
9,200 is on here.
I'm talking about 9,005.
9,500 is on here, covered in standards.
Yeah, right here. He has, keep the district focused on learning and achieving for all students. Keep learning and achievement for all students are the primary focus. I don't understand why you're saying, it's the same. It's not the same. This is the binder that was given to me when I was elected. So, we have three different versions here, which is an ethical violation, and I propose to remove this from the agenda.
Okay, well, we hear your proposal, and we'll see if we have a second. Let's continue the discussion. I will, once again, say that these are not my citations. These are from the Fact Finder quoting California policy. So, I didn't pull these out of the air. I'm not accusing anybody of anything. I'm citing the Fact Finder.
So, yes, I have a couple of questions. So, on the letter, it says that I engaged in intimidating conduct towards the two district employees. And so, on the report that I received, the employees' names were redacted. So, where is the evidence and where is the information that this actually occurred? This is looking at the letter that it says, we're looking at the first letter that says, directed following findings of employee complaints. And then, it has in here, you know, that towards the two employees, I acted improperly to exercise administrative responsibility and command over services of the two district employees. So, I do have the emails to reflect that the communication went through the superintendent first, because I received two complaints from a parent 10 days apart. The parent was redirected back to the district, and then, the information went to the superintendent. So, my question is, and the superintendent says she didn't know, and she directed me to the people that she thought knew. So, my question is, where is the evidence and the facts that support this statement that intimidating conduct towards the two employees happened? How, what's the fact-finding for this? Where are the facts?
Well, we're not here to, we're not here to relitigate this case. The fact-finding has already happened. You had, the fact-finding went on for three months. You didn't participate in it. We had a session in the last board meeting in which you had the opportunity to present your side of the story. Again, we're just not, we're not relitigating this whole fact-finding session right now.
So, I'm just asking questions. This isn't relitigating. I'm just asking a question. And just to go on public record, I'm in an area where I have a cell phone. The cell phone has, I can't communicate with people for long lengths of time, and I thought I made that clear, but I'm not going to keep going back over that either, because you're right, we're not here to relitigate this. But I'm asking a very specific question. It says that I was actually alleged and accused of engaging in intimidating conduct towards the two district employees. So, I'm just asking, where are the facts? It's just a simple question, because I've never been presented with the facts. This is a conclusionary statement, and so, I just want to know, are there facts anywhere? Detailed facts with how this happened?
Are you asking me?
No, I'm just, it's a general question.
I think that question could be answered over 13 times when the lawyer tried to talk to you about that.
This is an executive summary, so there had to be back-facing documents, which the employees stated their case, and that would be protected as their employees. And if you would have participated in the process, and by the way, I would get another cell service if you can't get phone messages for 25 days. But.
So, actually, you're missing the point. I didn't say that. What I said is I work in a dead zone area. I do receive messages once I'm out, and I do, I do get the messages in which I communicate. I just want to make sure that's clear. But I can't hold hour-long conversations, which is what this would have required. So, my question is, where is the information that supports this? There was an investigation, and the investigation was concluded, and there was strong opinion and judgment. So, I'm asking for the facts as it relates to this, and I'm asking for where the violations occurred, because these are alleged and accusatory. So, I'm just asking for facts.
Well, since I was correcting the record about my making personal accusations here, a couple of other things I just did want to do, say, to set the record straight. Mr. Memes said that this potential action would prohibit the discharge of duties by this trustee. I would have to disagree with that. There's nothing here in this vote we're taking that would prohibit our ability to discharge our duties. Merely funneling them through the superintendent, which is, to tell you the God's honest truth, is much different than the way I operate every day. When I want to talk to an employee, as a courtesy, I'll call the superintendent and ask if I, she minds if I talk to an employee about a certain question. I don't really have to do that as a trustee, but I do it just as a personal protocol. Also, wanted to object to the press release, if you want to call it that, that trustee Vincent put out at the last meeting, in which she used the phrase, possible coercion of I find that rather deplorable to be suggesting that our administrators, our employees, have been coerced by either the board or by the superintendent or by anybody into offering false testimony. Seems like a rather outrageous, grand conspiracy theory, everybody's out to get me, kind of a thing. I just can't understand it. Also, trustee Vincent mentioned at the last meeting that she had had conversations, communications with the superintendent and myself, and she implied that we had condoned her actions with these employees. Again, I would take strong objection to that. I had three conversations, to the best of my recollection, with trustee Vincent. The first two, she expressed her dismay that this student wasn't being allowed to transfer into Orchard Park, and said that her understanding was there are two students who had been allowed in the middle of the year to transfer. So, I made a call or two myself, and the facts that I got were, those were students living within the boundaries of the school, which is entirely different than from being outside the boundaries. So, I told trustee Vincent, you know, I think we've got a different set of facts here. I don't think anything odd or irregular has happened. Then, I got a third phone call sometime later, in which things took on a whole new level of decibels. She said she had spoken to employee number one, and vehemently told the person, vigorously told them that they had to change their mind and change their decision and allow this student in. And when that employee allegedly, apparently, said, I can't do that. It goes against board policy, and I can't circumvent the board, and I can't circumvent the superintendent. Trustee Vincent then told me that she was going to employee number two to bring her case. I told her in no uncertain terms, please do not do that. You are transgressing your grounds, and wait for the superintendent to be out of the district that day. I said, wait for the superintendent to come back. Apparently, she didn't. But just wanted to put those on the record.
I'm going to object to trustee Rulick's comments, and the idea of vehemently expressing dismay, I think that trustee Rulick is confused about the details and the events. And I do have emails, and so, I'm objecting to the chain of events, and I'm objecting to the comments. And so, I find his, you know, I think that people have to say what they need to say, you know, to make everything sound factual, but I'm objecting to it because it did not happen that way. And so, I have the emails to prove that, and the communications with staff was made, really at the request of the superintendent, because she didn't have the information. And my communications with trustee Rulick, from board member to board member, it's really rather odd that a trustee would take a phone conversation and put it in an email. It's the first time it's ever happened on this board. I speak to trustees all the time. And so, I am concerned about the details and the length of the events, and rather than belabor, I'm going to say, I object, and I don't think trustee Rulick is really clear in the communication that he did send, because we have brief communications. And unfortunately, you know, when a parent gives information, our goal is to serve the parents, to meet the needs of the community, and to meet the needs of the student, and as an elected official, that is what I did, was responding to a complaint. I received numerous complaints, and many of them actually never reach a certain level because it's not really necessary. But in this specific instance, there was specific information, and only a certain department had that information. So, I think that, you know, it's like looking at somebody in a lineup. You think you're pointing out the right person, when in actuality, the person that you think you're pointing out is not the person that actually committed the crime. It happens over and over again. And so, one of the things that happens in these types of instances is, unless there is a recording, unless there is a physical recording of the communications and what actually happened, it's almost impossible to know verbatim what the tone of voice was, what was communicated. So, I'm objecting to the contents of this letter, and I feel that these restrictions are illegal. There is no board policy. There is no ed code. There is no state law that allows a local school district to put sanctions on an elected official for any reason. So, I'm objecting to it, and I'm going to say again, it's improper.
Any other trustee comments?
I would like to go back to Crystal Sawyer White's comment. Could you bring up 9,000? 9,005, the board policy? And you'll see that it lists exactly what's on here. So, if you bring up our board policy, and if you keep going, it's exactly the same. I'm not understanding what the difference that you're reading.
I am referring to the California School Board Association. It's my understanding, the district was not a member years ago? Is that correct?
Yeah, but I'm not understanding how that pertains to this.
Because we abide by the California School Board Association.
We take what they give us, and then, we also adopt it to fit our needs. They're not always the same.
Okay.
In this case, this is our current policy.
On the bottom, this has been totally revised, based on communicating.
It matches that.
No, it does not.
Yes, it does. Keep going down. Okay, go to 90. I just read it myself. 9,005, is that what you're on?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm reading. It says, keep. Okay, I see what you're saying.
Yeah. It does not say, and then, it just says, communicate a common vision, number two. That was changed, value and support and advocate for public education.
Okay, we can change that when we get to the censure. We're on the letters right now.
So.
So, my point.
Go ahead.
So, the point is, this is ethical, this is an ethical violation, because this has been revised. You're accusing Ms. Vincent, based on 9,005, 9,000 and 9,200, which I lined up all these policies.
Go to 9,200.
And if it's revised, and we did not vote as a whole, as a board, then it's illegal. It's illegal. You cannot put her on probation. And I spoke to the California School Board Association about this. And this can become serious, to the point of filing with the district attorney. This is public integrity, district attorney, violation. That's the next level this can go to.
This one matches this one.
By putting her on probation.
Okay, so, what am I looking at that's different? This one here.
I don't think I should. I'm not really an authority.
Can you bring that up? Can you bring where I'm showing, yeah, just bring the same thing up.
I'm trying to read it.
Okay, but go to that section.
Mr. Rulick, just in the interest of trying to make sure that we're staying with the item that's agendized, I think what Ms. Sawyer White is discussing is the censure resolution, which is the later item. I think it's important that you stick with, in order to ensure compliance with the Brown Act, that you stick with the item that's at issue, which is the first letter that's on the agenda, to the extent there's questions about the censure resolution that's under a later item. That's an appropriate discussion to have at that time.
Okay.
Okay. So, we'll address the letter now.
Yes.
And, go ahead.
Further, do you have further comments?
Just, did the board consider the comment, the date change?
Okay. I was just going to have one last. I was just going to have one last exchange with trustee Vinson, that I will just have to respectfully disagree with each other on this matter then, as to what happened in these phone conversations. I wouldn't have even brought it up if she didn't bring it up at the last meeting and use my name as appearing as if I was in some sort of support of her actions, which I wasn't. I just, I just want that clearly understood. I never told her I supported her actions. The only thing I said was, "If you have questions, ask them. And if you're right, if they've done something irregular, I'll back you up." That's the only support I gave her. I didn't encourage her further than that. I would also read from a letter that I sent on May the 11th, 43 days into the fact finding, and still another 20 days from the end of the fact finding. Just to paraphrase, not to paraphrase, to take out one paragraph here. A S D U D A U S D takes such complaint seriously and has retained the services of an independent, neutral party to investigate the allegations. I understand the investigator has attempted multiple times to secure your participation, and that to date, you have not cooperated. I further understand that you are now willing to meet with the investigator, and the investigator will contact you in the near future to arrange for an interview. This was one of those on-again, off-again starts that went on throughout these 63 days. So to me, you talk about past behaviors, sort of precedents. It seems like this isn't the first instance that's happened. You talk about a fact finder. You talk about two very credible witnesses, who I think have impeccable reputations. And then you throw in the complete contempt for this investigative process. I just, if, I just can't understand it. If I was being investigated, I think I would make every attempt over nine weeks to find one week in which I had an hour or so to meet with somebody. It just doesn't make any sense to me at all.
So I'm objecting to trustee Rulick's words about impeccable integrity. I think he's entitled to his opinion, but I would caution him regarding the defamation of character, and regarding the judgmental, conclusionary comments that he's making in reference to employees. So, and I will also go on record to say that I had some information from the community, and I've not placed that information, I've not done anything with that information yet. But, you know, I don't want to go back and forth, but I just want to be clear that I am objecting to this. I think it is improper, and I think that this should not be on the agenda. And, you know, we're going to agree to disagree, and that's okay. It's okay. That's what makes the world what it is today. And so, once again, I'm objecting, and I think we, you know, we each have our task in front of us as board members, and we each have our roles and responsibilities. And at the end of the day, we're all on the same team, whether it feels that way or not. We're all on the same team.
Well, again, your objections are duly noted, and I believe we had a motion earlier? Was that?
No, no.
Did you have a motion that you had made, or no, at the beginning? Does anyone wish to make a motion?
Oh, yeah. Well, I would like to say before, this has just been a lot, I mean, this is like a full-time job, researching all this. And I'm saddened, I'm really saddened by this. This is taking away, this is becoming a hostile work experience for me, really is. And based on all the other districts, or even my friends, people I befriended, ask, they're baffled, thrown back by why are we taking the time to do this? So the point is, is that I like to say, you said you had a, Mr. President, you had a conversation with Ms. Vincent. I was not privy to this. I was told not to talk to her, and I didn't understand that. And then we didn't come together as a board, like I said, at the last board meeting, and vote on this. The attorney, we keep going through different attorneys. The attorney before her said, "Why didn't you work this out together?" No one sat down in closed session in May and say to her, "What's going on, Deborah?" No one said that at all. And we wouldn't be in this situation. It's a waste of $20,000. I can't even go to a governance conference where we can pay for attorney with $20,000. That this, I don't even know what to say, know what to say. I was excited to be a board member, but now I'm not. I'm really not. Because I can't even go and get educated on the governance procedures. I had to look this all up. No one's ever sat down and had a couple coffees with me on this and said, "This is what the agenda items are. This is the consent items." I'm learning all this on my own. And this is stressful. This really is. I have a full-time job. I'm not retired. And so I, yeah, I do want to motion to, because I believe this is ethical violation. It is illegal. They, in the history, I've researched all the other districts. No one's ever done this before. No, it's a waste of time, really is a waste of time. And it makes me feel uncomfortable to go to the school sites and talk to principals. I mean, we had an incident, I was like, should I talk to Adam first? Should I talk to Stephanie? I mean, this is too stressful. I think, I mean, I don't even like coming to these meetings. I really don't. I'm just, I don't understand what's going on here. She has to have an attorney, there's attorney here. This is, this shouldn't be happening. I haven't felt comfortable from the beginning, I was sworn in. And I really think that you should really consider this, because the next step is a district attorney can be notified, based on, I spoke to the Countercost County Education. They don't even understand it, the board members. I've spoken to a couple of board members there. This is, this should not be happening. And my son's in the district. I'm almost comfortable, I would take him out. I would take him out. Because I just don't feel comfortable going to volunteer in the classroom now. I'm not comfortable with what's going on. I thought I would have the support system when I was elected. And I ran for a reason. I ran for a reason to impact my community. I'm already born and raised here. But I think it's a beautiful city. That's why I took the picture up at the flyers. And my enthusiasm is just, it's just fizzled down to nothing, really. I mean, I shouldn't have to thoroughly research till 1:00 or 2:00 in the morning. I have a 10-year-old. I have to get babysitters. This is just, doesn't make any sense to me. So I wish, hopefully, I'm going to request a study session with the California School Board Association, so that we can understand what governance is really about, and the Brown Act and all that. I think that's necessary. Other districts are doing that. And I think it would alleviate the stress here. And so, yes, I motion. I do a motion.
What is your motion?
To pull it from, to pull this from the agenda, this is an ethical violation, based on the policies that you're accusing her of. 9,000, 9,005, and 9,200. It doesn't align with the California School Board Association. And we can't revise policies without a vote. So again, are we addressing this resolution? Are we on this now?
No.
No.
So when we get to this, yes, that's what I'm addressing.
Are you, are you making a motion about the letter at the moment?
Yes.
About the letter, to pull it or take no action on it?
To pull it.
Okay. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Trustee White and trustee Vinson, all those in, any discussion, further discussion? All those in favor of that motion?
Yes, aye.
I am.
Yes, aye.
I have to have oral.
Yes.
Okay.
I think a roll call vote is good.
Okay, we'll take a roll call. We'll go down to trustee White.
Oh, no, I just said I needed to hear orally. I didn't hear it.
Yes, okay. We're going to a roll, we're going to a roll call. Trustee White, you vote?
Yes, yes, to remove it.
Trustee Ha?
Opposed.
Opposed?
Yes, to remove the letter from the agenda.
Okay. Motion fails to carry.
And I would like to make a motion to approve with the date to be 2017 to 18. And just a little commentary, we have to protect our employees. If our employees feel threatened by a board member, it's our role to make sure that they do not, not put in that situation again.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'm going to object to that motion. I'm objecting to that motion.
We have a second, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm objecting. We have to have a discussion. I'm objecting.
Discussion on the motion, sir.
We can have discussion, okay?
So trustee Gibson Gray is making, can you state that motion again, Ms. Gibson Gray?
I said I moved to approve the letter with the dates 2017, 2018, and then I made a commentary, which is not part of the motion.
So I am opposing that motion, and I'm going to recommend that all school board trustees be trained, so they understand what harassment, intimidation, and bullying, and threatening behavior is. And I'm also concerned about the undertones of taking such a harsh stance from trustee Gibson Gray. I think there are undertones of discrimination, and undertones of racism, to take such, because she stated that we need to protect our employees. I work during the day. I'm, I work every day. And so I have no idea what the implication of that motion is, except that it implies that some sort of discrimination and some sort of out-of-control, you know, behavior. I'm a woman, it's pretty obvious that I'm a female. And so to go around threatening and bullying employees on site, I'd like to see the evidence and the facts for that, and I'm objecting to her motion. And I'm really concerned about the implication of her motion.
I'm basing it on the executive summary, which is not in your favor because you did not participate.
Any other discussion?
And, yeah, I like to say, by approving this probation, so to speak, how is that making it comfortable for me, as a new board member, or anyone else as a whole? That seems to be the problem. It's three to two, most of the time. So how is that helping our relationship as a board? It's dysfunctional, totally dysfunctional. And other districts are seeing this. I went all the way to Anaheim, and they, they almost wanted to laugh at Antioch Unified School District. They said it was one of the most dysfunctional boards. They're reading this. And, I mean, so I don't understand, Diane, how is that helping by putting her on probation and saying, "Let's just move it forward"? How is that helping?
Because employees felt threatened by her.
And did she try to kill them? Did she choke them?
You know what? I'm not going to debate the merits. I'm basing my decision, based on 25 days of not responding, another 15 days for the second. She didn't participate in the process.
She doesn't have to. She can have a lawyer. She needs a lawyer.
We have the executive summary, and that's what I'm making my decision on. I've made a motion.
And so before, I'd like to just ask a question to the board. So please cite the laws and facts, the state laws, the board policies that gives this board the authority to make these types of decisions regarding this letter, and to make the decisions that trustee Gibson Gray is stating. Where is the board's authority to do that? Please cite law, and please cite board policy that gives this board the authority to make these types of decisions. Where is it?
You wish to comment?
Again, school district governing boards have broad authority to take whatever action it deems appropriate that's not otherwise prohibited by the law. And so there's nothing in the law that specifically says, here's the various actions a school board could take related to one of its members. But there is nothing in the law that prohibits a school board from taking an action that still allows a trustee to perform his or her duties. Censure happens, letters to board members happen, direction is given to board members. So there is authority under the education code. If you look at 35,100 at SEC, you will find authority for the governing board to be able to adopt rules related to its conduct related to its members. So again, I can't give you a specific board policy that describes this particular situation, but there are laws that allow the governing board to make decisions as to how it will operate as a governing board.
And so I just want to comment that ed code 35160 also give board members broad authority to make decisions that are within the jurisdiction of their district. Board members have broad authority to make those decisions as it would impact their district.
Yes.
And so we're citing the same code.
Yes.
And my understanding of that code is that, you know, board members pretty much can make decisions as it relates to a jurisdiction, which is all of our schools, the community, and the families, and would not be outside of law to do that. And so I go on public record to say, I was supporting a family in this district. There was nothing aggressive or violent about that action. And I go on public record to say that this is a gross misuse of authority, and there is no law, state, ed code, board policy, or otherwise, that gives this board the authority to make the decision that they are making as it relates to restricting my access to school campuses, and I object to it. It is very improper at this time.
My motion still stands.
Yes.
There's a second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Nay.
We have two nays and three ahs. Motion carries. Item number, are we here now? C. I lost my page. Oh, there we are, yes. Letter to administrators regarding contact with trustee Vinson. This would direct President Walter Rulick to send a formal letter to the complainants and other district administrators, letting them know that they are not to respond to requests from trustee Vinson, and are to send all such requests to the superintendent for handling during the next, this one says six months.
So I'm also objecting to this. This is improper. It's an improper letter. And once again, there is no law, there's no ed code, there's no board policy that gives this board the authority to write such a letter and to put these prohibitions on an elected official. Elected officials are elected locally by the community, and it feels like political harassment. It feels like political harassment and political retaliation. And I'm going to go on public record to say that. And I'm objecting to this. I think it is improper.
Any other discussion?
Is this the resolution, Mr. President?
No, it's the second one.
This is the second letter, this one to staff. We have a card from Mr. Minns.
Yes, sir. Mr. Board, again, you know, I heard counsel say, justify that there was no violations of the Brown Act at the, at the meeting on August 23rd. When you bring in, bring in, bring in an item, an action item with options on it, after public discussion has been on it, and the people have not had an opportunity to speak on that issue that you brought forward, and even your board members have not seen it, that is a violation of the Brown Act. And it comes under section 54954, part three. It says, "Every agenda item for meeting shall provide an opportunity for members of the public to directly address the legislative body on any item of interest to the public before or during the legislative body's consideration of the item." That is within the subject matters jurisdiction. Further down, every notice for a special meeting, and that was not even a special meeting, shall provide an opportunity for members of the public to directly address the legislative body concerning any item that has been described in the notice of the meeting. So your, your, your options that you gave to this board, and your actions on her, were illegal because they were not presented to the board, and they were not even part of the board packet. So what your attorney is saying, I have to dismiss because she's not citing what the Brown Act is stating here. Also, it seems as though now you are, you have made a decision on the prior act, item, on an item by charging her with something that's not even part of board policy, 9,000 nor 9,005. How can you do that? You can't charge her on a policy that you don't even have in place. That is insane. I mean, so I think that, you know, the board members here have a, have a, have a critical flaw. You have never gone to board training. You don't know anything, how to operate. This is why you are sitting up here voting on a policy that you don't even have in place. you don't even have in place. Also, these actions here, you're supposed to have had actions already on the board before you start making decisions. You just can't come up like President Rulick did at the last board meeting, come up with all these action items himself. We're going to do this. We're going to do that. And then Ms. Gibson says she didn't know. I mean, so let me see this so I can read it. I mean, so she hadn't seen it. So you took an action. So I'm going back to the illegal action that you took on August 23rd that make this whole hearing here, this, like I said the last time, this kangaroo court, an illegal court that's, that's judging Ms. Vincent wrong. At least if you're going to judge her, have things on the books before you throw the book at her. And I would hate to say, I'm not going to be so hard as Ms. Vincent, but I would hate to say that there could be a racial element in this deal here. You have two black females here. And so it, it seems as though it's, it's, it's the big elephant in the room that's coming to play.
Further board discussion?
I'm sounding like a broken record. I just wish you had participated. We could have resolved a lot of things. I don't understand where race comes into it. There's nothing racist in the executive summary addressing the behavior. That's it.
So, and you're also, I understand, I hear you, and I feel like you're passing judgment. And so, which I feel is inappropriate. There's no facts. There's no evidence. The findings were conclusionary. Mrs. Maddox gave a, a very strong opinion. She's very opinionated and very judgmental. And so that's where I come in at. I, you know, I've been trained in harassment. I've been trained in intimidating and bullying. And so I'm recommending that this board receive training. If you want to protect the employees, then I think you start first with getting some training to understand what those, what those actions are. So you'll have a better understanding of it. And I'm not going to keep saying what happened, because you guys have already come to your conclusions. And so, you know, I'll leave you with that. But my comments remain the same about objecting because there's no ed code, there's no board policy, there's no law that gives this board authority to make these types of decisions. So I put the question out there again. Where does the authority come from for this board to make this type of decision on an elected official? I was elected by the community, not by the board specifically, and not by the employees of the district. So where does the board obtain the authority to make these types of decisions? Please state the law. Please state facts. And please state board policy that states that you have the authority to do that. Thank you.
We do have a board attorney, and I will go with the board attorney's recommendation. And absent your participation in the investigation, I'm going with the executive summary. So if there's no further discussion, I'm prepared to make a, a motion.
Okay, what would that motion be?
To approve the letter with, again, the 2017, 2018 timeline versus six months.
Do I hear a second?
Okay, so, again, you're approving the letter, Diane?
Yes.
And again, how's that gonna, as far as, how is this beneficial for the board in general to move forward?
It's beneficial for our employees.
So you're saying she should have never, she should have spoke to the investigator and not have an attorney present? Is that what you're saying? We're going based on this attorney recommendation?
She was notified. She could have got an attorney at that point.
She did not have to talk to investigator. She did not. She never had to.
That's her, that's her position.
No, that's not her position. That's.
That's what she did.
Right.
That's fine. So I'm going with the executive summary.
Okay, so you don't think this is an ethical violation here?
I think the behavior was in violation.
But the behavior, she's not a district employee. She's not a district employee.
Nope, she's not.
Okay, so it's not valid. It's not.
That's your opinion.
And so, but this is going to the media, right?
Correct.
And it's going to go further to the media?
That's fine.
Okay, so then you're willing to take this to the DA?
I'm willing to do what I think is best for employees at this point in time. And with that, I made a motion.
Okay, we had a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion?
My objections remain.
Okay.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Nay.
Aye.
Aye.
Three ayes, two nays. Motion carries. Item number?
Eleven a.
Eleven. Items for discussion by board. Item A, discussion on items requested by the board. Number one would be consensus regarding board retreat, work-study session.
And I, and I apologize to the board when I reviewed the minutes. I get consensus as to the will of the board. And Ms. Vincent had requested that there be a board retreat slash work-study. And I didn't get consensus if that was the will of the board, so.
Work-study.
At a previous, at a previous board meeting.
Work-study on what?
Would you like to elaborate?
So, one of the things that has not occurred is the board has never set a strategic plan, strategic goals, and we have decline in enrollment. We still continue to have high-suspension expulsions. And, you know, we have safety issues. And, and so it would have been a chance for the board to come together to discuss the 9,000 policies that were revised. And I, I put out there, to this date, I don't know who worked on the board policies. It wasn't the board. And if the employees are the ones that wrote the board policies and worked on the, on the policies, they're in violation. So the board should have had some time to come together to review these policies, to make sure they were appropriate, and then to have some discussion and to vote on them. Had we had a retreat to come together or a meeting, I say retreat, but it, what it would mean is that the board having five to six hours to put a vision in for the district, to work with the superintendent. We've not done that. We've not set any goals for this district as a board. And that would have been the purpose. I've been trying to do that since I've been on this board, to help us refocus and to help us come together as a governing team. Doesn't mean we would all agree, but it would mean that we would have a common vision for bringing our students together and for improving academic outcomes. As you know, we've received complaints about from parents that their kids have As, but when they took the CAS, their, the scores did not reflect the As that the students received. So we have some incongruence in various situations. And I think as a board, we need to come together and talk about it. And that was the original intent. It probably would have been more appropriate as well to come and, and look at and talk about some of these issues. And then, who knows? We may not have been an impasse. But I will cite later that there is a pattern. There is a historical pattern that has occurred in the past three years, and I will talk about that later. So that was the reason for it.
Okay. And in regards to the policies, there should have been a first reading of the policies before they were voted on. And I just learned that on my own. And then we review in a study session, we, the California School Board Association is willing to come out here from Sacramento and have a study session regarding the policies as a study session. And that's what, is that what you're referring to, Vice President?
Yes, I was referring to, because we were since October in process of reorganizing, that our policies had not been updated since, gosh, it's been over 10 years on some of those and 15 on other policies. And so we were in the process of updating our policies. And it would have been more than appropriate for the board to have a day when those policies came back to review those policies one by one and to make the changes, kind of the way we did on implementing 9200. You know, we did some work on that. We made changes in 9240. But we didn't do that. We somehow rushed those policies through. And there is some concern that those policies were manipulated and changed for the benefit of the actions that are occurring here today. I don't know that to be true, but I've heard some gleanings about it. And we could have prevented this had we had the time to come together as a board to go over all of this. And so that really was the original intent is to.
If the purpose and intent is to have a session together, fantastic.
That was the intent. So we, so we can come together on some of these issues and talk about it and set a direction.
Sounds good.
Okay, and then 9240 did not exist before I was elected. I brought that to attention. We had 9318, which was conference and training. 9240 is nine, board development. And that's what I've been really practically advocating, and it's been put on the agenda numerous times, and I still cannot complete my governance training on that.
May I?
So that did not exist, 9240, before I was elected.
Yeah, I just, if I may make a comment, I'm, I would need direction from the board to know how the strategic goals adopted by this board are contained in the LCAP, how this would be a different set and how they would align. Because as you know, we're required as part of the local control to have set those goals, of which the board has already adopted. So I'm wondering how they would be substantively different, and maybe that'll help me prepare for the day, if that is something that the board wants to do.
So part of what has, thank you for the question. Part of what has not occurred is the board has not met at a group, as a group, to look at those goals and to see what the goals are and how they're impacting or whether or not they're effective in the district. I mean, we've, we've left that to, we hire staff, which is great, but to this date, we don't know. So perhaps the, you're right, the goals are in place. Let's, let me say, for example, parent engagement. How are we faring on parent engagement? Obviously, if we have decline in enrollment, we're not faring well. And so that's my concern, is that there are goals outlined by the LCAP. You are absolutely correct, that, you know, certain things we should be doing. But if we're not talking about them as a board, and we're putting the burden on staff, then we're also abdicating our responsibility as the governors of the district. It doesn't mean we're going to change anything, but we're going to look at it for effectiveness and for efficiency. And we've never come together to talk about that. Because as you know, the LCAP goals are set at the community meetings with parents. And I, I understand it's mostly staff there, but we should improve our, we should improve our parent enrollment. There are just things that we must do to continue the viability of the LCAP funds, the LCFF fund, local funding formula being spent as intended by the state. It wasn't meant to be harmful. It was just for us to come together and to, you know, also look at some other issues, which I won't state here, but I think would be more appropriate in a setting with board members.
May I offer, what is contained in board policy is that the board would do an annual self-evaluation of how they're working together as a board. Perhaps the first step would be to start there and, and discover possible needs of the board and how they are working together. That's just, it's.
That's a nice prison to work through, the self-evaluation.
Right, would get, set some parameters.
Would that be a starting point?
Are the board to do a self-evaluation? Has this board ever done a self-evaluation in the history of the district? That, you know, does anybody that's been here for 25, 30 years now have any report come out? I think it is a good place to start, to look at some of the effectiveness. But I think that that won't take up the bulk of, you know, we'd have to set aside some time for that. But I don't see that taking up the bulk of, you know, what we're doing. And we'd have to determine the instrument for that. So.
I can reach out.
You're right. I did see that in one of the goals.
I'm wondering, since it is following CSBA policy, it's mirrored to their policy, if perhaps they have an evaluation tool that I could share with the board?
And I just want to comment earlier is that it would have been helpful if, if board members had been given the login to GAMET at the time that the board policies were coming through, so that we could go in and look at the policies. I, I think CSBA understood that as a board, we'd had those logins. And I didn't know that they existed. So it's just in order for this board to be effective, we have to have the information necessary to be effective. It isn't about, you know, impeding what staff is trying to do, but, you know, because if you look at the hierarchy, it's pretty clear where things fall. And I'll go on record to say, I have emails to prove how I communicate in this district. I have emails to prove it. So some of these, you know, I'm just going to say, I think we just need to continue to move forward in how we're, you know, looking at this so we can get better. I know Rocketship is coming. So I, I think rather than waiting until Rocketship gets here, it's good to kind of set a strategic vision.
So I just need direction from the board as a whole as to what you would like to see occur.
I think you went to explore some options or some directions.
I'll take it upon myself to call a few districts and find out what, if they've done some self-evaluation and what it looks like.
We can contact the California School Board Association in regards to the study session they come out here.
So you're, you're thinking training?
Yes, in regards to policies. Yes.
That would be helpful, too.
Sure.
For a first read of the policies.
We've already had first read and adoption.
But they've been revised.
They have been revised.
But they came before the board for first read and adoption.
But again, like trustee.
But training is.
But based on the GAMET login, I spoke to other new board members. I'm not going to emphasize new. I know I've been on here almost a year. They received the login from the superintendent, and you only had the access to, to GAMET. No one else had access.
There's a long list of employees as we were revising them. Now that they are adopted by this board, they're automatically are connected, those that connect, is my understanding.
No, that.
Say that again?
We're automatically can log into.
If you go to our website, you automatically will be redirected to GAMET and those policies which align.
So actually, I, I just received some info, and I don't know that I'll necessarily go through the website, but I do have the access to the other entity. And so I'll just check it out from there. But thank you. At least we have it now, and we can check and, and take a look at. But I'm going to go on record to say again that when those board policies were coming through in draft mode, they should have come before the board. The board, the board is the one that put the policies in place and, and, and write and detail the policy, because they're, they're how the board is governed. So perhaps some board members had a chance to do that. I don't know. But it would have been helpful if we as a board had come together for that, just in future reference more.
And my understanding that is the purpose of the first read?
Yes. But we didn't go over any of it.
First read is thoroughly going over the policies.
Yeah, we're talking detail.
Line by line. 9,000 did not exist. And almost 11, I had a discussion when I first was elected. I met with you. And I emphasized that policies were missing. 9240 did not exist. Board development did not exist. It was 9318, training and conferences only. So the emphasis of 9240 is board development to enhance our skills as board members and learn the governance practices, which is, we wouldn't be in this situation recalling a board member. I, I, I mean, we would be privy to the laws, Brown Act, all this. I have to buy books at Barnes and Noble. I have to research. I have to go online, talk to, get advice from other board members. And they, they're stunned of what we're going through. And I shouldn't have to thoroughly research. I mean, I don't know if you're aware, but Los Angeles is getting $105,000 a year because they have to research and go, this is a full-time job. It's a full-time job if you want to do a good job as a board trustee. And I take this seriously. I really do. So I'm on the floor in the library. I get the conference room constantly, at different libraries, all by myself, with the binders on the floor, studying. And, and I noticed that the policies were missing my first week on the board. They were missing. And then I can't go to governance training. I have to pay out on my own credit card, reimburse. I'm not understanding this. So this wouldn't be occurring if we were all knowledgeable in governance training. Like President Rulick said, Pittsburgh has experience in governance training, or you cannot be the president. Okay? And this is preventing for me being president if I can't go to governance training and be an effective board member.
So it sounds like I have consensus from three board members that they would like training on policy. And Walter Rulick, Gary Hack, said they are interested in doing a self-evaluation. Do I have a third board member who is?
I am interested also.
Okay, so I will take it from here, and then we'll move from there. The second item was requested from Ms. Sawyer White. The second item was requested from Ms. Sawyer White, facility use.
Okay, again, um, I'm not understanding why my name is listed against, I mean, for my, the agenda items that I requested. Um, other board members request items to be on the agenda, and my name is listed. Um, so, pardon me?
I list names.
Not, previously, you have not?
Yes, I have.
Not every, never, no.
Yes, I have.
Okay.
No, because that was...
Number one, that's...
No, we could go back to a couple of agendas, and, and there aren't any names there. So the facilities, um, I have issue with, it seems like we resolve partially the concession stands. Um, I, I hope that we can address these fees. They are quadruple, or triple in fees, two thousand dollars, when initially, other board, districts, I think there is like five hundred dollars facility fees, um, so I have a question about that.
So are you requesting a board report, or more information?
A board report, why the fees so astronomical compared to other districts? We spoke with Chris Lerner, Lern, about, um, this, and it seems like, um, we had a parent come in, and I don't recall voting on the increase of the facility fees. Was there a vote, President Rulie?
He had the log in.
Yes, next question.
There was a board report on facility use, in which the board, um, had input into whether or not they agreed with the increase. The board was given the rationale as to why it was increased, and the board at that time, could have provided input.
What is that?
Uh, Mr. Jeff Collins came before the Board of Education and discussed the facilities, the facilities use increases, why the district had not in the past increased them, and the rationale for increasing them in the future. At that time, the board had an opportunity to provide input.
So I thought Mr. Collins was gonna provide us a separate, I thought he said he was provide a separate report about the fees in comparison to what other districts were doing, and said we were behind in comparison to what other districts were charging, and I was expecting something else to come back to the board with more specifics, and with options and specifics for community groups, because I heard someone say earlier that it is by group, and it depends on what the activity is, and I'd like to see it be equitable for all groups, not just, not just be based on, you know, this group here, this group here, whatever they're doing. I think we have to come up with, with something that's going to be equitable and fair. So that was my understanding. I'll go back and look at the report, but I don't recall seeing fees. This is, you know, so...
It would be nice to see apples to apples, what a two-hour rental would be here in Brentwood, in Pittsburgh, and just to see three or four, five districts.
So perhaps we could provide that information in a Friday board letter?
Sure.
And then, with that, I see at least two of you agree?
Sure.
Three, so a comparison of, comparison of fees by user group, like nonprofits versus, okay. All right?
Send me a copy there, too.
You bet. It's all, all of our Friday boards are posted online, they're public records, so... They're all yours now.
I'm just asking.
I know, yes, I will.
Trustee White, did you, wanna talk about special education, transportation?
Yes, um, I'm getting complaints in regards to the travel time. One hour, um, to get to the destination, so I would like, um, some type of report on that, um, feedback. I'm not understanding why the kids are being transported, and I was wondering if the board as a whole, were you aware that the kids are being transported, and that the time is, oh, the issue was, the parent that complained said they're late for work, because the bus is either late, or the van, and that situation, so I just wanted to know.
I've heard the same complaints, and I think we received an email regarding some transportation issues, but, um, didn't hear back, because they were referred back to...
I, I have received no complaints from either of you. Can you please, per board policy, forward those to my attention?
They were referred back to the source, so maybe the staff resolved it, because I haven't heard anything again, I don't know.
I'm unaware. But I would be happy to resolve those complaints if you would forward them to my attention.
Well, they're not really complaints, but, okay. Okay, and in regards to the data, um, yes, I, I just would like to know the status of what's occurring at these after-school programs. Um, you know, as far as the learning outcomes, um, there's situations where there's assisting homework. Um, other districts, well, my district where I work, uh, they have chests, which is pretty good, after a homework session, it teaches you to think and so forth, instead of them actively running around supposedly, it's not, every after-school program is not effective, it's not doing the same activities. Sylvan Learning Center, we approved that months ago, haven't received data on that, and then Hanover, I, we'd like to receive data on that.
Would the rest of the board also like to see some data on those programs?
Well...
And how would they like to receive that?
Um, I don't know, because, um, Dr. Clark, we hired Hanover, and it was, they were gonna evaluate all of our programs, and that's been months. So is the evaluation complete?
So it's not that they come in and evaluate all of our programs, as we're implementing programs, they provide us support and research in implementing the programs. So thus far, they have provided us a detailed report on K-three math interventions, they've also provided us a detailed report on, um, attendance patterns, on ensuring that students are coming to school, and what to do to address truancy. They have also, um, they are currently, right now, working on a, um, on a, um, examination of our entire, um, EL program for our EL students, district-wide, K-12, and so that's one of the things that they're currently working on, um, right now. They also, previously, before we opened up our dual immersion, um, programs, they also provided us with all of the background research and literature returns, um, in terms of effective dual immersion programs, which we structured our, our program on. So that's just a small example of, of some of the work that Hanover's doing, but they're not coming in, just so I'm clear, and evaluating all of our program, they're giving us the research and the support, um, towards the programs that we asked them to look into. So thus far, math, English language learners, attendance, and dual immersion are the core projects that they've completed for us so far. And I'd be more than happy to include one of those reports in the, uh, in the Friday board coming up.
As an example?
That'd be great.
That'd be good.
Okay. Provide, okay.
Item number twelve, resolutions for persuading, none. Thirteen resolutions for immediate action, authorization to destroy records. Who's going to address that?
Ms. Santa Maria?
Yes, um, we, again, have stated, you know, the qualifications or the requirements for, um, destroying records, they are, the records are classified into class one, which are permanent, class two, optional, and class three, disposable records, and, uh, we are making recommendations or requesting to dispose of, destroy certain documents classified as class three records, as noted on the attach list.
So we're just talking about class three?
Class two.
Class three, uh, being destroyed?
Yes.
Okay. This is an action item, do we have a motion?
Nice to move.
Moved by trustee Hack. Second?
Second.
Second by trustee Gibson White.
Gibson White, that's good.
Gibson.
Gibson orange, Gibson gray, I don't know. Trustee Gibson White, I like it.
It goes together, it's good. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion thirteen carries. We, that moves us to the resolution of observance of Constitution Day.
Dr. Clark, did you want to address this?
Yes. Um, so every year, um, every year, districts are, um, required to, um, present a, a resolution for Constitution Day, and so, um, because it, because it falls on a weekend, we're going to celebrate it on, um, we're going to celebrate it on a, on a Monday, and, um, let me just grab. So this is, um, this, this is an action item, and so we do need the, um, we do need the board to accept the resolution, so that we can celebrate this event throughout our schools.
On the eighteenth?
On the eighteenth?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay.
Falls on the seventeenth, but, I mean, on the, on the seventeenth, so we're gonna celebrate it, and, seventeenth is Sunday.
Do you have a program of what some of the activities would be, or has that not been cited?
It's up to the, it's up to the schools, they do that on a daily basis.
Mm-hmm, okay. So possibly on their website?
Might find some of the activities on our Facebook page.
Thank you. So I support this. Do you have a comment?
Can you add C in my piece of paper there, and I can talk to B? Are we on B or C?
This is B.
B.
Okay, sure.
Something I sent to you guys, an email earlier today.
Yes.
So I was asked to speak on it, Mr. President.
I see it now.
It's called Take the Preamble Challenge. It's from civicsrenewalnetwork.org. And so it looked like something interesting that we should add to, uh, school. I really appreciate, I'm glad this is being done. Uh, too many times, there was a survey done recently, I happened to see this today because of this, and I saw a nationwide survey that adults don't have a lot of knowledge of the Constitution, or even the First Amendment, and that only seventeen percent of people asked across the country, uh, what's in the First Amendment, they can identify freedom of religion. Thirty-seven percent said freedom of speech, and the other numbers were less than that for freedom of the press, which made me very concerned. Um, and, uh, then also, freedom of assembly, and the freedom to redress government, as we're doing right here. So I think the more constitutional knowledge we can have in the classroom, the better. But if you might wanna take that website down, civicsrenewalnetwork.org, they have this thing, you can actually, each school can register their own school, uh, and it is, the event is happening, uh, on the eighteenth, nationwide, Take the Preamble Challenge. So it's actually what's in the preamble to the Constitution, um, not necessarily all of what's in the Constitution, but this is great. Um, one year, I'm a student, uh, not student buddy, uh, president of Rotary Club, uh, my year, on September seventeenth, we distributed out copies of the, copies of the Constitution. Maybe what we get to do next year, that's something I know the Herald would like to be a part of, is somehow getting copies of the Constitution, just little pocket copies, be able to be available to the students, um, throughout the, the school district. I don't know if it's done just in eighth grade and eleventh grade, as part of US history, or it's all school, all students, every, okay? Maybe we just pick out a certain age group, like we do the dictionaries, the Rotatorians do with the dictionaries, the third graders, maybe, I think it was eighth graders, we did the, the Constitution that one year, in two thousand, I think it was nine, fall of two thousand nine. Anyway, something to add in there for the future.
And I believe Assemblyman Frazier gave a pocket one out, one year, to our students.
You know, my apologies, I just saw, I, it got caught between some papers, Julia wanted to speak on eleven A, did you still wanna comment on something? Julia?
Eleven A.
Sorry about that, missing you.
All right. Please remind me if it's about Deborah Benson, or the after-school program?
After-school program, I believe it was, yes.
All right. Good evening, members of the board, and good evening, dear members of the community. I want to remind, uh, board members and members of the community that we are the wealthiest country in the world, ranked very low in education, in comparison to other developed countries. With that said, after-school programs need proper organization, must be extended to all students, must include dinner, meal, and snack, must be only controlled by any of the school district accredited employee teacher, not by outsider entities. In addition, the after-school program must take place only on a school grounds. It must have plenty of class aids, recesses for students to relax, stretch, socialized among peers, so we're talking of an after-school program where students work for twenty minutes, relax for four or ten minutes. Such a school day program offers a fun, productive, dynamic, enriching school experience for all students. In addition, for students who don't need help with homework, or academics at the school, they must develop their own natural talents and interests. The school must help with it, too. For this, school teachers know their students. If not, they must observe and find out the student's individual talent. And nevertheless, we could make wise use of after-school programs, meaning we could be preventing and preparing students to become doctors. In actuality, the more a student, the more a student spends time in school, the safer the student and the community is. By doing so, we will be the first district to bring needed, meaningful change and model to our society and nation. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. That brings us to the, uh...
We still need a motion?
Comment on thirteen, thirteen B, Mr. Minz.
You know, I, uh, kinda looked at this item here, and I was looking at the second paragraph, it says, "Before this law was enacted, the holiday was known as Citizenship Day." Now, that day, I could celebrate. The, um, I cannot celebrate a Constitution Day, because of those of you who knew, who may not know, the Constitution itself is a slave document that codified the enslavement of African people for more than two hundred and fifty years. It was created by lazy white men who did not wanna work, who wanted black people to work for them for free. And so, why should I go around and celebrate a document that resulted in the enslavement of African people in this country for two hundred and fifty years? And so, in terms of celebrating this day as Constitution Day, I cannot, but I wish that they had not changed it at all. It should've stayed like it was. Uh, Citizenship Day is more agreeable to me, but not Constitution Day. In the Constitution itself, it has the three-fifth clause. The three-fifth clause is talked about, and, and this is, um, stating that black people only consider us three-fifths of human beings. It, it was also codified under the famous Dred Scott decision, eighteen fifty-seven, uh, with a, um, Supreme Court justice by the name of Tanny, who said that black people consider us three-fifths of a human being. He was using the Constitution to justify his decision. So I cannot, in all, in all, in, in what I know, to celebrate this day as Constitution Day. I can celebrate it as Citizenship Day, but not as Constitution. Remember, we didn't become citizens, African people didn't become citizens until the fifteenth minute of the Constitution. Thank you, just wanna let you know.
Julia, the Constitution Day?
Good evening, members of the board and members of the community, I appreciate your attention. I want to advise you and request that we don't move forward, or that you guys don't move, don't vote into putting in place this observance day, because that will take the day off for the students, and we need to keep the students in the, in the schools as much as we can. It, it's beneficial to the student and to the community. Then, they, there is a whole bunch of workload that they have, that I've noticed that they have, that, they, and a lot of material that they need to learn, so they need that day to learn more. And I noticed that our school district, and pretty much the school system, it's taking days away and shrinking the hours and days for the students. I think we should do the opposite, and just a lot, that day that you guys are planning and, and proposing to, to have this observance day, let's just let the students benefit from it by staying in the school, because that's the money, the taxpayers' money, that's already been allocated for them, let's not change for something that they don't really need it. Let's not change for something that they don't really need it, right? They need to be, what they actually need is to be in the school, learning, socializing with them, mastering their environment, mastering society, learning and developing their lives more. Thank you very much.
Okay, we move to, uh...
We need an action.
Action.
A vote, motion.
On Constitution Day, do I hear a motion? Moved by Trustee Hack.
Second.
Trustee Gibson Gray, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. It brings us to Resolution Number C, uh, C, Resolution Twenty-Seven-Ten, again, appropriation limit for two thousand seventeen eighteen.
Yeah, as part of the U.N. closing process, each school district are required to adopt a resolution identifying the estimated appropriation limit for the current year, which is seventeen eighteen, and the actual appropriations for the preceding year, which is the sixteen-seventeen school year. This is known as the GAN appropriation limit. Although it's part of the unodmitted actuals report, which is, you know, this big Saks Form report, we are also required by the state to do a separate resolution, and the board must, must approve this resolution tonight, because this should be submitted to the county office by September fifteen, two thousand seventeen. So we are attaching to this agenda item the actual resolution, and also the computation for the seventeen-eighteen and sixteen-seventeen school year appropriations.
It's an action item, do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Trustee Vincent?
Second.
Second. Trustee Crystal Sawyer White, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Again, motion carries. Brings us to item thirteen D, Resolution Number Twenty-Seven-Ten-Eighteen, censor of Trustee Deborah Vincent.
So let me ask a question. So this is just the resolution, we didn't have to, oh, never mind, the PDA was additional information, never mind the PDF. Go ahead. I was on the GAN limits, that's okay, go ahead. Thank you.
We have discussion on this? Thirteen D, Julia, and followed by Mr. Mims.
Thank you very much, good evening. Thank you for giving me the pleasure, the opportunity to say a few words about this issue. I want to ask you, the board members, to please close your eyes, breathe deeply, breathe deeply, try to reach your consciousness, and ask yourselves deep in your brains, hearts, if we are engaging in discrimination against Vice President Vincent, let's process this matter slowly, clearly. And if we are engaging in discrimination, let's be fair, honest, professional, let's realize that no human being is perfect. We will make mistakes. Sometimes they're conscious, sometimes they're unconscious, or sometimes with just lack of maturity, formal thinking, or experience, or whatever X-Y reason, right? And let's do the right thing. Also, let's realize that if the board goes forward with a motion to remove Vice President Vincent, we are going to use taxpayers' money, time, energy. Please, please, be exact and truthful with each other and the community, and focus more in educating the students, in developing their lives efficiently, and using the funds that we could use for attorneys and private investigators and so forth. Let's use all that funding money into the students. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mims?
Again, I'll reiterate it, like I stated earlier, that if the illegal action that had not taken place on August twenty-third, I mean, yeah, August twenty-third, we would not be here today, because you voted on an action that was not part of the, of the listed agenda item, which denied the people the access to even comment on it. But we're here now, and you've already made some other decisions. My concern is, is just the, the weight of the punishment of the decisions. It's punitive. I mean, punitive inaction, it's not as though, you know, it's, it's, it's not as though there was a whole litany of crimes that was committed prior to. This is the, this is a case in which the, the board president failed, because what he should have done, and this is how, how you operate, if a board member is somewhat out of control, then you, or, or the superintendent, I mean, they would contact the superintendent, and she would contact you, our president ruling, and you and superintendent, if necessary, would call in, would call in Ms. Vincent and talk to her, and then let her know that this is not how we operate. But that did not happen, I assume, I'm only assuming, I don't know. But I, when speaking to Ms. Vincent, I don't think that that happened at all. But it should have happened, at least that part should have happened. It should have given, you could have given Ms. Vincent direction, is that I don't need you going on these campuses and doing what they, what they claim that you're doing. And so, but that would have alleviated a whole lot of stuff. But we're here now, and, and your actions, as I stated, are punitive in nature. It, it's, it's like you're putting a muzzle on an elected official. That's what it is, because it, it results in, in the silencing of her, and limiting her ability to move throughout this school district, which is a violation of her rights as an elected official, who is elected by the people. The issue that I have with, with Diane, with Diane Gifford Gray, Mr. Hack, and Mr. Rulick, is that you three want to throw everything at her, like you were throwing the kitchen sink on top of her head. I mean, you could have said, okay, well, we're, we're just censuring you, or we'll just do this, but you have all these other options in there. That was, that was put in there by one individual board member, created at the, at the last minute without board approval. So again, I say that you are, you have violated the Brown Act, and also in a way, violated Ms. Vincent's due process rights. Thank you.
More discussion? Mr. Peyton, you get to turn the card in?
I did, I did.
Yes, he did.
That's the one I did.
Oh, that's the one, that was earlier, yeah.
Yes, thank you. I just have one question, and that is to clarify, it's something's been said tonight versus what I was told before. I was told that you're the one, Mr. President Rulick, that you hired the outside investigator, that you're the one that has the authority to do that, not the superintendent on this issue, because it was an investigation of a fellow board member. That's what I need to find out, is that, that's, I think the public needs to know who's the one that made the decision to hire the investigator and spend the tax dollars on that. But as a citizen, I'm going to take my hat off, and basically, as a, as a reporter, I think this goes too far. The letters earlier, okay, she's been, her hand has been slapped, and obviously in the public, I think it censors unnecessary. I think, obviously, she should have, and I say this, Deborah, you should have participated in the process. I don't think that's, was wise. I don't think it was fair to the other board members or to the staff, okay? You should have participated, at least give your side of the story. But the bottom line is, I think it sure goes too far, guys, okay? Enough is enough, and you've sent the letter, you've sent the message strong and loud, both to the district staff, to Deborah, and to the public, I think, through both my media source and others, that, that Deborah has messed up and made a mistake. Hopefully she understands that and somehow gets it cleared. But I agree also with Mr. Mims, a different step should have been taken, maybe, to sit down and say, hey, what's going on? Get both sides or both parties to the table. That was the question I had for you before, I still never got an answer. Is there some other process that could have been taken prior to having an outside investigator come in to do this process? All right, thank you.
May I respond to something?
Yes.
I think we're getting kind of on who made the decision versus who has the authority to enter into contracts. And simply, when, when the employees brought forth their concerns, I immediately, because I do not have the authority to direct any single board member, I contacted Mr. Rulick, who then sought legal advice per board policy, and the legal advice he received was to contract with an independent outside investigator, at which point he shared that with me.
And I would like to confirm that that's exactly what I did with the first complaint. This is the second complaint. So I did the same thing as board president back then. We had an employee complaint. I contacted our board attorney, and investigation happened, and you remember the rest of the story. You participated, it was resolved. Now we're claiming, we're at number two.
And I followed a very similar course of action. I was the vice president back then, and I had no knowledge. Trustee Gray communicated with me zilch, no knowledge of what was happening during the whole course of that interaction back then, because we just tried to keep it as, you know, private as possible, and, you know, keep the world out of it as best we can. As far as Mr. Peyton's thinking goes there, some of that certainly resonates with me. I, I like to think of myself as, if nothing else, I'm a very accommodating person. I'll, I don't meet a person halfway, I'll meet them if they come a quarter of the way, I'll meet them. I wished Trustee Vincent would have shown some of that. To this day, I don't see any, for lack of a better, I don't know, repentance or remorse, other, you know, rather strong words, but I don't see any kind of give and take, maybe I made a mistake. If I saw a little bit of that, I would certainly have a different posture.
As I recollect correctly, an email was sent out that we were told not to speak to Deborah, so that confused me, and I agree with what, in regards to meeting together, I would have, as a board president, would have spoken to Deborah or individually, but as a board, we never met. We had closed session months later, which I felt was like going in the lion's den. I wasn't aware of the legalities of this, I had to research. And then she was asked to leave so we could review the findings. And so she took this public for a reason, because this is not known for a board trustee, which she, again, is not a district employee, to be put on probation. And again, I think it's gone too far, we, we have a lack of communication here. I think the superintendent and the president should have, we should all met together prior to hiring an investigator. You took the side of the employee and decided to take legal action before discussing it with the board members. And I, I'm not in agreement with that.
And I'm not going to go, I mean, I have my opinion on this, but this is the documentation of what's happened in the last four months, and there's been no response in any of the documentation. There's been no involvement, there's no been reaction. They're just stuff, you know?
But again, it has to, Trustee Hack, it has to be a violation of a policy. Again, she said, "Education code," and where is the law? So again, as I stated earlier, this nine thousand five has been revised based on the charge, based on the California School Board Association, nine thousand five has been revised to criminalize practically Deborah Vincent in preventing her to, to go on school site campuses. And I, I am confused on the directives for myself to go on school site campuses, to talk to district employees in a certain manner, what have you. So this has been revised to communicate a common vision that was not, this is not listed on the California School Board Association site, operate openly and trust in integrity, that, that's been revised. So that's illegal. Again, like you said, I don't want it to sound like a broken record, but it's illegal based on, I spoke to two to three sources, it's ethical violation, this can become serious. Gibson Gray stated, if you don't mind going to the media, this goes to the Chronicle, I mean, this is not going to go local. This is, this is pretty serious. So, and again, we're not trying to unify, we're not trying to unify, so I, I am concerned.
Attorney, Attorney Grantham, could I ask you to, if you would comment on normal protocol about this thought of, well, why don't we just get the board get together and thrash this out and have a, you know, a, a meeting together? Under what circum, I, I don't understand what circumstances that could be done on, on...
So there are obviously limitations under the Brown Act on the board convening, and so anytime we are looking at the board convening to discuss an issue, we have to determine, is it an open session or is it in closed session? There's very limited bases under which you can get into closed session. You can get into open session on a number of different bases. One of the challenges that comes up with employee complaints, or complaints in general, anytime they involve a student, an employee, you run the risk of there being privacy considerations. And so if you were to have a discussion like that in open session at a properly agendized meeting, you have to be very careful that student privacy rights under the Family Educational Record Protection Act are not violated. You have to make sure that employee rights to privacy are not somehow violated. And then the other thing that you've got to be mindful of in any investigation is, does revealing the identity of the complainants potentially expose the complainants to any sort of retaliation? And under your board policies for uniform complaints and complaints against employees, just as an example, there is language that talks about confidentiality of complainants in certain circumstances. And so all of that has to be kept in mind, because you, as a governing body, are limited in when you can get together and speak about things, and whether it's appropriate, even if you can do it in open session, whether it's appropriate because of privacy considerations for you to do it in open session. So those are some of the limitations that you have to be cognizant of.
Okay. But again, we received the email, not to speak to Ms. Vincent. So for a whole week, there was no communication. So I took the initiative, and I didn't understand, I, it's been dysfunctional. So you're telling me it's been uncomfortable for Ms. Vincent for us to communicate, to get things on the agenda? There was no communication. So can other board trustee speak? Why, why would, well, as I told, I cannot speak to Deborah Vincent.
I don't know who, I don't know, by the way, pardon me, Deborah, I don't know who told you that.
No, that was an email, that was an email.
No, I, my communication was, please do not discuss this matter, not, don't speak to Ms. Vincent. That was not the communication.
Okay, and that, well, I, it's not verbatim, but do not speak. And so in regards, here's some examples. She's the vice president, and the lack of communication is just deteriorated after that. And I'm just saying, she's the vice president, she should be, phone calls won't return, she can't get things on the agenda. So we have to still communicate. She hasn't been committed of a crime. So we have to communicate as a board to get things on the agenda, right? So we don't communicate, there's not, no cohesiveness at all.
I can respond to your question about, in an investigation, what is the standard admonition that might be given about communicating? And so in any investigation, there is typically an admonition given by somebody that you are not to discuss the matter with other people who may potentially be involved in it. And so the purpose of that kind of admonition is to make sure that you're protecting the integrity of the investigation. And so again, I don't have information about specifically what was said, but it is not uncommon at all in an investigation for a, don't communicate about this matter admonition to be given to involved parties.
So he could have just seek, seek legal advice and not hire an investigator, right? And then we could have met, the other attorney prior to EU said we could have met together as a board, and an investigator didn't have to be hired. I mean, because you have to get a vote before you spend the, as the, Mr. Peyton said, as a whole, before you spend the tax dollars of an investig- before you spend the tax dollars of an investigator.
Can I ask a clarifying question? Are you talking about what we discussed in closed session?
No, I'm not talking.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to figure out. When was that discussed, that we could, we didn't have to hire an investigator? Was that near?
No, I'm researching.
No, I thought you said the prior attorney. That's what I'm trying to figure out. Said that we didn't have to hire an investigator if we all got together and spoke. That's what I'm trying to understand.
No, I don't recall that.
Okay.
Yes, everybody's shaking.
No, it's really a general statement, because you keep switching attorneys again, and I think we should have met with an attorney a long time ago. I mean, I, now the attorney has appeared after seven, eight months of her not responding to the investigator. And you, again, she could have had an attorney to represent her, but, you know, this is a scare tactic to me. I mean, I was, I felt uncomfortable. So the point is, like we said before, that Mr., the president and the superintendent could have sat down with vice president out of respect of her stature. That's what I'm saying. I feel a lack, I feel that she's being disrespected. We can't, no, you know, turn phone calls, emails, you know, we don't even communicate the other incumbents here. I just come to the board meetings. We don't communicate. So only time I communicate if I have a question or something like that. But again, she's the vice president. She's not a criminal. And like I said here, this is, this is not legal, based on the 9000, 9005 and 9200. And I just want that to be taken in consideration, because initially you did not have a policy listed at the meeting August 23rd.
Any other discussion?
So I'm just gonna make comments that I said earlier, that the board still has not answered my question of where they get their authority from to censure an elected official that wasn't elected by the members of this board, but elected by the community. And so I will, you know, I would like to know that. The other thing I'm gonna go on record and say is, there's, you know, people keep, you know, you guys keep discussing the one piece about the interview, and I've given that, I've given my perspective, but I feel that there's some emotional shutdown about understanding what that perspective is. And so the other thing I'm gonna say is, there's no bylaw. There's no law. There's no rule. And when I look at the policies and I've read them, I'm not outside of the policies. I'm not in violation of any other word by law policy. I think there's conclusion. There's, you know, I think that some of the statements have been expatiated to sound true, and there keep, there is several references about, you know, the first incident. Well, the first incident is also false. I was with two parents that day, and the parents claimed that there was a video. So I understand that, you know, people have their perspective about it, and you're gonna draw your conclusions, and that's okay. But, and also on this censure document, there is listed, on the third page, the bylaws 9000, 9005, 9200, and board policy 4119.21. Where is that board policy? That looks like an administrative rule for certificated employees. So where is board policy 4119.21? When I look it up, it's for certificated employees. So I think there's some confusion about what is going on here. I am not an employee of the school district, and so I'm objecting to this. I think that this, there has been no due process. I think the situation has been unfair. I think that this situation is not legal by law, by, not by education code, not by the board policies, not by any other violations. I've done research. I've talked to a few people, and I'm concerned about the need to be so harsh, the need to shut down me as a, I'd like to know what the real threat is. So I'm asking the board members, what is the real threat? What are you afraid of? What is the real problem? So I'd like for board members to answer that. What is, I know trustee Gibson Gray says that she has to protect employees. Well, I work with professionals every day. What kind of protection are you talking about? Were people beaten? Were people hit? Were people verbally cursed out? Were they threatened? I'd like to know specifically what you're talking about. And, you know, I'd like also for someone to state the facts and to state the law that gives the board the authority to do this. And now, I have a history of people in the community and people, I've deflected quite a bit. I have deflected quite a bit, and I'm more inclined to believe the community and former people that work in this district when it comes to character, and, you know, when it comes to people and who does what. But I'd like for, I'd like for the board members to answer that. What was the threat? What was the intimidation? What was, it seems like there was some violence that occurred. I'd like to know what happened. Where's the evidence for that? Because this is very harsh. I don't understand the mindset. I'm, I don't understand the mindset behind the censure. I don't know what the board is hoping to accomplish by doing this. I usually enter schools at the request of staff. I usually visit schools at the request of staff, and usually the superintendent's notified. So I'd like for someone to tell me.
And the parent initially contacted, my understanding, when a parent reaches out, that's why I'm hesitant. I'm getting emails now from parents, and I have to follow a certain protocol, or I feel like I'll be on probation. I'm next in line. And that, again, this is just time consuming. You know, like I said, I was excited to be elected, and the votes that I received, and I'm all about education, you know? I have a master's degree in education, and I want to learn. I want to meet other board members. I want to get out, and I'm being prevented from doing that, and so is Deborah, coincidentally. So I should not be prevented to attend conferences, meet other board members, and they're telling me the same thing over and over again, why is this board so dysfunctional, and focusing on this type of reprimand, so to speak? This is not really a reprimand. And it's just, I'm not understanding. I agree with Mr. Payton, Mr. Memes, that we can move forward, and these board meetings could be, you know, more focused on the kids, because, again, I want to say that my, this district that I represent, I'm supporting them 100%, and I feel comfortable that the kids are getting the best education possible. Not discussing, we can't get on the, we can't go over to the websites, I mean, we can't go to the school sites and talk to, because my understanding, I don't know, Deborah gets out, I get out. I haven't bumped into anybody, really, except for graduations, which I couldn't attend, because I work full-time, I plan to attend this year. But, and I went to the summer school after-school program. Nobody addressed what was going on at Deer Valley. So we need to be free to go to school sites and see what exactly is happening on the school sites, and I want to feel comfortable. That's why I wanted a list for the vice principals and the principals. Who is new? How long have these principals been here? Why is there a big turnover? Well, Dallas Ranch, Dallas Ranch, there's some issues. There's some issues.
Okay. We need to.
No, I just, the point is, I just wanted to be free to go to school sites and not be intimidated.
Yeah, we have to limit our discussion to what's on the agenda right here.
Right, and I put a question out. So, and I'd also like to say, there's a statement that I exercise administrative responsibility and commanded the services of two district employees. Well, let's be specific. What services did they follow through on? What did they do? Where is the evidence? Where is the information? I know, I know specifically what I asked, and I asked two employees to help a family. What's wrong with asking employees to do their job, to help a family? There's nothing wrong with that. If the superintendent doesn't know, and the superintendent says, I don't know, talk to these two employees, talk to this person and that person, there's nothing wrong with asking an employee to help a family. We are elected to serve students. Children must come first in this district.
I'm sorry, did I, did I, did you have a point you wanted to make earlier?
No.
I wanted to make the point go on record that we had the lowest turnover of admin staff that we have had in 10 years. So I just want to make sure that that is in the public record and is, I don't know where that information came from, that it's otherwise. Also, the second was that I actually recalled Vincent saying that I would have the employees call you if you had questions about policy or procedure, and I had actually let you know that I would talk to them in order to contact you, so I just want to make sure.
Yes, you did, you did talk to them to contact me, absolutely. So I do have the communication via email, so, but you said that you would call them, absolutely, after I had a phone conversation with you, but then you also said, I don't know, I'll talk to them, and then why don't you talk to this person? So part of what happens when there's so much time that goes in between these situations, the situations become convoluted, and then you're looking for the truth. As I said before, it's like looking at a lineup. You're pointing out a person that you think is the person that did what you thought they did, only 10 years later to find out that was not the person. The person's innocent. So what I'm saying here is, no board policies by me were broken, no ethics were broken by me, no crimes were committed. So saying that I intimidated employees and threatened them, usually if there's a threat, people follow through with threats, people follow through with intimidation. So I still, to this day, don't know what happened to the student, what happened to the family. I don't know that. I never got a follow-up email stating that. So I'm objecting to the censure. I'm objecting to the information. I'm objecting to the listing of the bylaws, that something was done wrong. This process has been unfair. There has been no due process, and the board has been unwilling to listen. And I'm gonna say, in reference to board president role, that just did not occur. I understand people have been on the board before. I know that this, things have been tumultuous. I would say a board, a board trustee resigned in 2015. So I feel like we're continuing some of these communication patterns, and some of these conflict, internal conflict within the board. We've gone through a superintendent based on some of these same old internal conflict. So I'm asking this board, number one, I'm objecting to this. I think this is inappropriate. I think there's no reason for it. There's no law that gives this board the authority to do that. And I think that this shouldn't even have been on the agenda for a censure. It shouldn't even have been there. There's been plenty of time for the president to meet with me, to talk with me, and I'm gonna say that when board members are communicating with each other, if board members don't have the confidence among each other to discuss issues that are happening in the district, we really have a problem. Things are so corroded, you have to take a board member's communication and have that discussion with an employee, something's really wrong. It undermines the governance of this district, and I think that moving forward, something needs to happen, and it needs to stop. It just needs to stop.
Okay, and for the public record, I did not mean the turnover for all employees. I meant Dallas Ranch, that we had internal applicants for that particular position, and we hired a principal out of the district. That's what I meant. And I'm not understanding that, so that's what I would like to say.
Okay. Well, we're not here to talk about that. That's another topic, another day. Well, all of this has been duly noted, and, you know, we can go around and around all night on this, but I'm not here to be cross-examined, so I've said my piece. Do I, do I hear a motion?
I have no approval.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
No.
Motion carries. Item 14, resolutions for second reading and actions, none. 15, board policies for first reading, none. 16, board policies for second reading and action, board policy 2251, classified professional growth.
Yes, all three of these policies have come before the board for a first reading. This is a second reading.
And action?
And action.
And this policy, it doesn't exist?
Yes, this is a, this is a California School Board recommended policy. When we revised our policy, it was inadvertently left out. Actually, it's not their policy. This is, goes in line with the contract agreements. We have some of our bargaining units, and it was in our old policies and not included in the new policies.
But it's not on the California School Board Association?
Correct. This is an AUSD policy.
Okay, so you're saying this particular policy is for personal growth, and we can, as a board, can't attend conferences, but the classified employees can, it's for personal growth?
I'm saying that this is a policy that was inadvertently omitted when the board adopted the other policies, and we ask that you approve it this evening.
And this is a policy that was written from within the district by staff?
That aligns with contractual obligations we have with bargaining unit members.
Do I hear a motion?
Are we doing A, B, and C together, or just separately?
It's up to the will of the board.
I think separately.
Say that again?
We were doing them.
Yeah, they have to be separately. We're looking at A.
Do I hear a motion on A?
So move.
Okay. Moved and seconded.
I didn't hear the second.
I'm second.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Trustee Vincent first. Motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Is that four I? Five I's?
Yes, yes.
No, I say no.
One A. Motion carries, four to one. Board policy, B, board policy 4372, management, confidential, supervisory, fringe benefits. Who's gonna be addressing that?
It's similar. It was inadvertently left off, but aligns to contractual obligations.
Do I hear a motion?
So move.
Moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Moves to item C, new board policy 6142, world foreign language instruction.
And this is the policy that has our dual immersion program embedded in it, and so it's an action item. It's for second reading and recommendation for board to adopt.
Do I hear a motion?
So move.
Move by Gibson Gray.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Hack. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 17, information, anticipation of future action, none. Information items, number 18, for general information. New administrative rule on world foreign language instruction.
Yes, no action is required on this item. It's simply for your information.
Okay, strictly information. 19, future agenda items from board members.
I have one that I would like the board to consider. We received the PG&E report, but it's not, thank you very much, by the way, but it doesn't address the question I'm trying to figure out. We added solar. Was there a benefit? I'm just seeing PG&E numbers. I need to know how solar has offset it.
Would the rest of the?
That can be in a board, it could be a presentation if you need it to be, or a Friday board, whatever is appropriate.
Would the rest of the board like that in a particular manner? Friday board buying, is that something the board wants?
Yeah, Friday board.
Yeah, that would work. Number 20.
Well, let's go to 19.
19, I'm sorry.
Because Kristin does my ideas that she wanted to bring forward in the future, so I don't, that would be appropriate to add those in.
It was just that we contact the California School Board Association with a study session in the next month or so, so we can be informed.
I have that noted, yes.
With the California School Board Association, they can come out here.
Item 20, additional comments. We've exceeded the first 30 minutes. I don't think we have any cards. Reports from board members, relative to memberships, other organizations. Anyone wishing to speak there? I attended a black historical colleges the other day, and Ms. Wilson was right, it's really. really, it's like attending a graduation. It's one of those things that you gain more than you give, just being there, the inspiration. Future meetings.
Wait, I wanted to say something. I went to open houses, both elementary, middle, and high school, and I have to say, the middle schools, the parents, I saw, I felt there was more attendance and interaction than I've seen in prior years. So, me, when my kids were in middle school, I kind of dropped off the face of the earth, but I was glad to see parents out there. It's really nice.
Yes, I agree.
So I also attended middle school open houses with parents. That was an awesome experience, and it's good to stay connected in the community. And there are some other events coming up. I am still wanting to know what's, Ms. Anello, you'll follow up with me with the 50 backpacks?
Yes, I'm waiting here for Mr. Jim now, definitely.
With school supplies, thank you.
And I actually went to open houses this summer. Got into my old classroom.
Future meetings.
I've given a lot of information to Ms. Anello for the retreat, so hopefully we'll get some follow-up on some of that. Thanks.
Future meeting, September 27th and October the 11th. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So move.
So move. Okay. Seconded. Okay. Good evening.